I don't think anyone's got sound.
Okay, so it's just after ten.
Sorry?
It's just after ten if you want to make a start. Um, we'll start recording this meeting and, um, Jack Dee is going to start the YouTube channel as well for those who are watching but not in the meeting.
Thank you. Thank you. So we're still waiting for Pete Gilbert to say, okay, let's just get going. Whenever you're ready. Council says.
Oh, he's looking a bit perplexed up there.
Yes. There's number two.
Hey, we're all up and running.
Okay. Good morning, everyone, and welcome to this first virtual meeting of the Children and Young People's Overview and Scrutiny Committee. Hopefully, we're all familiar with the protocols for these remote virtual meetings, but if not, could all non-committee members please turn off their cameras? And can everyone who's involved in the call please mute? So that's all, all non-committee members, to turn off their cameras, please. Okay, hopefully, everyone's familiar, when we get to the agenda items and people want to speak, if you could use the raise hands function. I think to try and make it flow a little bit better, rather than constantly going through the chat, every member who asks a question can ask up to two supplementary, try and keep it fair, other members as well, so everyone gets a chance to speak. So immediately have a dialogue with two supplementary to the officer who's presenting or responding to the agenda. Firstly, this is the first formal meeting I've been involved in since we went into lockdown, so I just wanted to convey my sadness and I'm sure all of our sympathies to the families of Bill Alner and Richard Chatterway, who passed away very sadly recently. Okay. Apologies, please, Helen, if you are unmuted.
We have had apologies from Shaun Taylor.
Okay. Members, disclosures of pecuniary and non-pecuniary interest, if there are any, please. No? Okay, the minutes of the 28th of January, it seems an incredibly long time ago. If we can go through that page by page, please indicate with the raised hand function or just unmute yourself if there is anything you wish to raise. Hey, one, two, three, four, five and six. Okay, they'll be signed as a true record of the meeting. Public speaking, and I believe councillor John Holland wishes to speak, so John, please turn on your video and your microphone.
Right, thank you, Chair. Yeah, can you hear me?
We can.
You can?
Yeah.
Uh, thank you, Chair, this is a request concerning the interim executive board, which was imposed on Round Oak School last year. And it's been triggered by the recent cabinet meeting where it was suggested that the IEB was imposed for financial reasons. And I know that's not the case because at the time, I asked our internal auditors and they confirmed that the school had been in surplus the previous year and was in surplus for the current financial year and that they had no concerns. Um, I also know that it's in the public domain that Ofsted had visited and found the school to be a good school. Now, after the cabinet meeting, we had a meeting with the portfolio holder and Richard Chatterway, in fact, possibly his last very sensible suggestion, was to refer the matter to yourselves and ask to establish why the IEB was imposed on a school which was financially sound and with good quality education. There are a few other things because, um, at the time, I asked if the IEB had been appointed by an Equality Act compliant means and was given an emphatic no. And there were also concerns raised by local MPs and I know that Jeremy Wright wrote to the regional schools commissioner and Matt Weston did as well. Um, what I'm not looking for is to blame anyone. I think if we get into a blame culture, we become paralysed. And if we're looking to the future, then of course we need to understand what has happened here so that we can actually, if an IEB is to be considered in the future, actually have a correct approach which is going to support and help the education of pupils and students. Um, also, I am not asking you to revisit the Round Oak Ridgeway situation. Cabinet have made a decision, that will go ahead and the normal procedures will apply in due course. So what I am asking is if you would carry out a scrutiny review of the IEB for Round Oak with a view to, if you like, a code of practice or lessons learnt for when an IEB becomes a possibility at a future date. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, John. And as you'll be aware, with public speaking, there's no requirement for reply, but perhaps one of the committee members might wish to raise the points that John has in the next agenda item or for the work programme item at the end of the meeting. Okay, thank you. So agenda item three is question time, questions to portfolio holders and updates from portfolio holders and senior officers. Could we start with any updates, please, from officers? I haven't been made aware of any, but are there any?
Not from me.
No?
Uh, okay, not for me either. Uh, we have a significant item to come up later, Chair, in relation to Covid recovery.
Thank you, Nigel. Okay, members, committee members, any questions to Colin or to Geoff, who are with us?
Not from me.
No? Okay?
I've, yeah.
Jonathan?
Yeah, thank you. Um, yeah, so just to follow up from what councillor Holland said, just to ask the portfolio holder that. So I had some concerns about the way that the IEB was put in place. Um, and so would, um, kind of in that, that idea of looking forward and lessons learned, would councillor Hayfield um, welcome kind of a review of how we do IEBs in the future to make sure that we do them in the best way possible?
Colin?
Thank you, Chair. Um, yes, I, 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 I'd hoped that we'd sent out a a short briefing note on the processes for IEBs. Um, they're not an everyday occurrence. Uh, they're usually a culmination of a significant concern or series of concerns about a school. And it requires the regional schools commissioner to sign off the IEB. It's not something we can just impose as a local authority. Um, I think the issues relating to Round Oak were explored to a certain extent within the cabinet report that dealt with the amalgamation of those two schools. Uh, and certainly, um, but I, 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 I would be quite happy for members to perhaps better understand reasons which might lead to an IEB being, an interim executive board being put in place and what a school might have to do in order to have that removed. And there's only, I think, one or two, Trinity, I think, has still got one at the moment, for example. Um, but they're not forever. Uh, and they are just to sort of see a school through a particularly difficult period or what's perceived to be a particularly difficult period.
Jonathan, you can come back in if you wish.
Um, yeah, no, thank you. I, well, I think your suggestion may be picking it up in the work programme to see if there is uh, a desire amongst the committee to do a short piece of work on it. I think we could pick that up in the work programme.
Colin?
I think I'm going to go back. Yeah, can you hear me now? I'm just going to say the same thing, really. Can we put that on our work agenda for a future meeting?
Yep, when we get there, I'm sure. Okay. Any other members with any questions to Colin or to Geoff? No? Okay, agenda item four and over to Nigel Mins.
Thank you, Chair. Just, I've just sorted my papers out. Um, yeah, this paper, um, I'm planning to give a brief overview, a brief introduction and then really open it to, to members for questions. Um, Ian, Bud and John Coleman are both here as well.
Hello, Tony.
So they are able to comment on.
Apologies, Nigel, do continue.
Uh, yeah, so the paper itself is in two parts. Um, and it sets out the proposed approach to recovery, leading to a recovery plan cabinet, which is proposed as a plan. And this is really an opportunity for, for members of the committee to kind of feed into what the priorities are that are within the remit of this committee. Um, part one of the paper then summarizes really what's happened over the last three months and gives a kind of guide to, um, uh, some of the work. My document pack is just, the report itself has disappeared.
It's okay, take a minute.
Okay. Um, yeah, so, um, part one sets out some of the things that take place. I'm not going to go through the exhaustive list in section three that kind of runs through all the things that have taken place over the last three months. Uh, but clearly, um, you know, things like the fact that schools have remained open throughout, uh, that they've been offering a blend of face-to-face learning and online learning to a range of different pupils. Uh, I wanted to highlight some of the additional support for mental health that's gone in these schools and for wellbeing. And I think, um, the example is in the report of the webinars run by educational psychology with up to 1,600 people participating in events. Um, the support that's taken place at schools to help them to expand their openings, support with risk assessments and also the plans for kind of development as we, as we move forward and as schools be, you know, move to becoming fully open again, uh, in September. Uh, the report also has a list of achievements, I suppose, for children's services over the last period uh, relating to, um, the way that essential services have been maintained, the way that visits have been carried out. Mainly, we've been able to continue face-to-face visits throughout, although with some virtual visits to supplement those. Um, some really impressive work around support for foster carers and again, uh, big events with foster carers taking part, directly engaged with senior managers. Um, the youth outreach work, which I think I talked about in member briefings, uh, supporting young people and engaging in activities. Um, and the laptop distribution, both our own laptops and the, and the DFE ones. Um, what, what isn't in the report, interestingly, is, is a reflection of the commission services too. And again, they have been operating a wide range of ways to provide support, including a really kind of focused, um, online offer from children and family centres, but also other commission services, young carers, for example, have been doing some great work. Um, so, so that's the kind of, the backward-looking part of the report, if you like. Um, there are four things I'd like to draw members' attention to in, um, part two, which is really the cabinet report, um, which went a week or so ago. Uh, so I wanted to draw members' attention to recovery principles and objectives in paragraph 2.2 of the cabinet, cabinet report. And I, and I think those principles are really about recognizing how quickly, flexibly, innovatively, the, the authorities had to move and the speed it's had to move with over this time and not wanting to lose that and wanting to capture that into the recovery. Uh, the recovery then objectives set out, um, kind of, uh, the, the things that we want to achieve as part of this process. I, I wanted to focus on the fact that this is a, a multi-level approach. So we've got national, regional, uh, county-wide work and locality work going on. And I wanted to kind of remind people of the partnership involvement, so working closely with districts of boroughs, the police, health, et cetera. And then I think finally, I just wanted to pick up the, the three phases. And at the moment, we see this very much as a foundation phase, uh, trying to, um, to get things up and running. That's consolidated over the next three to nine months and then into a kind of accelerated long-term recovery over the last period and that's set out, uh, in paragraph 2.5. And I think that's probably enough from each air, if that's okay, and, um, we can hand over to members.
Sure, thank you. One question that I had on my mind was, have we been able to step in in regards to IT for families who might not have provision at home for education?
Um, so, um, for, for children and young people, uh, yes, there are parameters, there are limits. So, uh, right at the start of this, we, uh, provided a range of laptops for, um, care leavers and children in care. So we used some of our, uh, decommissioned, uh, kind of stock from the recent update and we were able to provide them. Uh, subsequently, we had the offer from the DFE, which, uh, totaled 1,400 laptops in various forms. So that's for year 10, uh, and 12 students, no, sorry, year 10 students who are disadvantaged and also for any child with a social worker. Um, we had a delivery of 22 pallets of laptops, uh, which were distributed or started to be distributed very quickly. I have to say, there was quite a big gap between the announcement and the arrival of the laptops. Uh, but once they got here, they were distributed very quickly. Um, academies, uh, received those who have disadvantaged year 10 separately. And again, the process was slightly slower for them than it has been for those delivered to us. Uh, the one issue I think that remains outstanding is we're still uh, discussing with, raising with and pressing the Department for Education around young carers who don't qualify under this scheme. Um, and that, that's an ongoing kind of pressure for us. Um, I should say that the, in addition to the laptops, there were also a number of, uh, I think they're called MiFi devices to enable access to the internet as well as the actual physical devices. So, yeah.
In regards to these young carers, have we lobbied our MPs?
Uh, I don't know if we have, actually, that is a really good question. And, and if we haven't, we will.
Okay. Uh, Colin?
Sorry, I didn't expect to be next. Uh, yeah, I mean, just, so, so are you saying, Nigel, then, that not all young people who need a computer have one yet?
Um, I, I, I can't guarantee that everybody who needs one has got one. Um, the ones that came in for social workers have gone out, lots of trinkets have gone out. I don't know if every single one has yet gone out. Um, but certainly the vast majority of them have. The ones that were delivered for, for us, the schools have gone out, our own laptops went out very early, earlier. Um, last time that I checked, and Ian might know, uh, have a, um, more of an update on this, uh, some, some academy trusts hadn't yet received, um, the actual number, see, well, so 80, 890 of the DFE ones have gone out, as John's posted in the chat. So there are still a few more to go out. Um, but, uh, yeah, as I was saying, not every academy trust has received a DFE laptop yet. So some were still waiting.
So if we've got, I mean, uh, some schools must have some children and young people that are not interacting with, um, you know, whatever, whatever they're doing online and, and their, whatever their work, you know, for those young people is, are the schools kind of following that up? Do we know? Do we know if every young child is getting some interaction from the school? And then on a longer term, another question would be, what's going to, in the plan for GCSE students for next year? I know this year's are being given predicted grades, but do we know whether they are for next year as well?
Um, so no is the answer to the, to the second question. Um, discussions are still ongoing and there have been some suggestions, there may be changes to exams next year, but we don't know what those changes will be. I think one of the suggestions is they might be pushed back, uh, to take place in, in kind of June, July, rather than uh, May, June, so as late as they can in the school year, uh, to give people that additional learning time. But none of that has been confirmed nationally yet. Um, in terms of the level of engagement between schools and those kind of who are interested, sorry, uh, uh, whether they engage with learning or not, Ian is probably better placed to answer. Ian, but sorry, is probably better placed to answer that than I am.
John was also trying to come in, so if Ian and John do want to come in on this, please do. Perhaps John first, who had his hand raised early.
Yeah. Um, I, I was going to, uh, say, yeah, we have distributed 850, 890 laptops, um, so far and around, um, 50, uh, MiFi devices for people who haven't got, um, the internet. Um, the criteria for the DFE laptops is quite, uh, clear. You do have to have a social worker or be in year 10 or a care leaver or, um, in care. Um, so, uh, but we are, you know, we are, uh, receiving special cases around the early help or um, schools who think a child would specifically benefit. Uh, and we do have capacity to help some of those young people. Um, so we are working together with schools on those. Um, but I, I think young carers is the biggest area for us and, um, as Nigel said, that we, uh, we have around um, a hun, just over a hundred, um, uh, young carers who are, either have no Wi-Fi or, um, laptop. And we are working together on that and, um, certainly, uh, we've been trying to find a solution. And if we can't find one, then we will, um, we, um, escalate that. Uh, we spoke to the DFE and we've asked them to extend the, uh, the offer and, uh, increase the criteria, uh, for the, for the laptops. And so that's certainly something that, uh, the DFE in our regular meetings have agreed to, to take back.
Thank you. Ian, do you want to come in?
Yeah, just picking up from that, we do meet with the DFE every week. So we're able to regularly get messages back through the system on what's working and what's not working so well. And those weekly meetings continue. There were a number of delivery delays, uh, to schools and academies, uh, gradually making their way through those. There was announcements, of course, from BT as well on Wi-Fi connectivity, hotspots. Um, we still need more details on how that's going to roll out because that's going to be key for sustaining connectivity for young people through the next six months and potentially beyond, which is where we're heading into next year. You'll have picked up, there's a national announcement, uh, for vulnerable learners, uh, in relation to access to tutoring. We yet to see the details on how that scheme is going to work, but it will be a big feature of the recovery next year. Meanwhile, locally, of course, what we need to make sure is that wherever a young person is being educated, that the quality of blended learning, as we call it, a combination of onsite learning and using e-learning is strong and robust. So we put a lot of time into webinars and training, uh, for, uh, schools, uh, including academies to make sure they're on top of the technology uh, and the learning opportunities that that provides.
Okay, thank you. Colin, do you want to come back in?
No, fine, thank you.
Okay. Pam Williams?
Hi, thank you, Chair. Um, yes, I, I think, uh, I'm very impressed by the flexibility and how people have actually, all the staff have managed to carry on working at home and all the meetings that have been held, especially with foster panel. That's worked really well. I think what I'm concerned about is how we move on from this and the number of children in care that maybe should be moving on now. Have we any idea how we're going to manage that through the system?
Do you want me to come back on that, Chair?
Um, please.
So, um, in terms of the, the next steps, particularly for our, um, children in care, we, we have around, um, 720, uh, 780, sorry, children in care today. Um, that has slightly increased during Covid because, um, we have some children who are unable to leave care or move on to permanency plans. So we, we are working through, um, each of those, uh, individual, um, plans, making sure that children can move on to permanency as quickly as possible. Um, the vast majority of those, um, are waiting either for an assessment from a social worker. Um, and that, um, that might be a family member who's in another part of the country. Um, we've struggled to be able to send social workers to other parts of the country to assess family members in Scotland or in Down South because obviously we can't, they have nowhere to stay, et cetera. Um, so we're hoping over the next few weeks we'll be able to, 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 um, start that again. Um, and we're also working really closely with the, um, local courts because, um, there's a, um, court hearings, um, have continued. They have been virtual, but only, um, if there's, uh, they're in an agreed, um, uh, position. Not where there's a contested hearing where parents are, are arguing that their children should perhaps return home or have a different plan. Um, but the courts have opened just yesterday again. Uh, so we're hoping that, um, some of the backlog of, um, family court cases, um, will be caught up upon. But it will take some time really for that to happen. So, um, we're working through those on an individual basis. Um, what I would say is that during, um, Covid, we've been working really hard to support our foster carers. Uh, we've had a foster carer forum like this and it's worked really positively. Um, and carers have fed back that they feel really connected to, um, children's services, to, uh, the senior leadership team because, uh, there has been more communication and we'll definitely be utilizing the, the technology to, to maintain that link. Um, and we've continued with Children in Care Council and certainly we've actually seen more young people attend that uh, and had a, a, an increase in, um, young people's views around what, what's been happening for them for children in care or through Covid, which has been really positive too. But you're right, it is an area we need to keep a really close eye on around, um, children in care and we'll continue to do that and, uh, continue to give you updates on that.
Yeah, thanks. There's definitely been an increase in confidence in foster carers and the increase in attendance at panels, I think, has helped in that because they've, they've been able to chat and they've, they've seen people that they haven't met before. So I think that's, uh, that's a great improvement. Have we, are we looking at staying put placements? That's what I'd be interested in because I think some of the placements that we have at the moment may, um, may move in that direction, especially as we've now got an increase in the number of applications for foster carers.
Yeah, we absolutely, um, are wanting, staying put is a, a programme for children to stay in the, in foster care for longer into adulthood. Um, and we've got, um, really good figures on that. We've actually really increased the amount of staying put placements over the last 12 months. Um, and that is definitely being maintained. And we've actually during Covid, during our normal sort of annual review of, um, foster carer allowances, we've increased the foster carer allowances for staying put, uh, which has been really well received by carers, um, because it, um, previously, foster carers would, uh, receive quite significantly, uh, less money, uh, for children, young people, if they stayed in the placement over the age of 18. That's not the case any longer, um, so that's been well received too. So, uh, we really want to try and support our, uh, foster carers and our children to stay in the foster placement for into adulthood, as would you would if you were a child at home. Um, so, um, I can give some more specific updates and figures and things on that to councillor Williams if that's helpful, but, um, outside the meeting. Um, but we are absolutely committed to making sure we extend every opportunity for staying put.
Okay, thanks very much, John, thank you. Thanks, Chair.
Thank you, Pam. Margaret, Jonathan and Dominic, I have, and if I've got the order wrong, I do apologize, but Margaret?
Uh, thank you, Chairman. Um, yeah, I just wanted to go back to this blended learning and make sure that we don't lose any of the advantages that we've seen. There's been some disadvantages, but some of the advantages we need to hold on to. So I was wondering if we are giving lots of advice to schools? And it's not just a matter of, as it were, having home learning, supplementing, supplementing what goes on in the classroom. But this individualized learning that you can get through some of these packages can be used in the classroom for individual issues that children have got. Um, with, obviously with the support of the teacher there as well. It's a very powerful thing to do and I wouldn't like to see the schools lose some of these, um, techniques and skills that they've gained over this period. And on a similar footing, um, in terms of the mental health support that we've been giving out during this lockdown period, um, what have we learned there about, um, the sort of support we can provide, early intervention support we can provide either for children at home or children in schools? And, uh, just on my last point, just, I was interested in what Pam said there about foster parents feeling foster parents feeling more confident now? And have we, have we learnt more about how to support them during this crisis in terms of using technology? Thank you.
Who does want to come in?
I can answer the question about foster carers, so if Ian wants to answer the question about school. So in terms of foster carers, absolutely, I mean, I think just having the conversation, we've been having a fortnighty foster carer forum with carers online. And there's a really proactive foster carer association too, which we're hoping to bring a report on that to a future overview and scrutiny committee to explain a little bit more about their work. But they've definitely been more proactive and been able to communicate with us around actually what is helpful, what isn't helpful. And we've responded to that. So whether or not they want more wraparound support, some particular advice around how do you manage family time with some young people who really struggles with having more Skype contact with their families in the foster home? And how do they manage actually being cared for by their carers? And having communication, more direct communication in the foster home with their birth parents? And so we've been able to give quite a lot of advice around managing anxiety and managing the stress that some of our young people have found. But also actually, a large number of our children have really, who perhaps cope, have found, they don't cope very well with the normal life routine. They've really connected with their carer and really been able to really enjoy that, actually not being at school and been able to have that connection, that relationship because of the trauma that they've struggled with before. So we've been able to support carers about actually how do you manage that? And particularly manage getting back into a routine. So I think the confidence comes from increased communication, increased relationships. And absolutely, our approach has been to have an open door. So I've been really encouraging foster carers, if you feel you're struggling with something and you're not getting the response that you need, then talk to myself or talk to Sharon Shaw, the service manager for fostering. And we've been able to respond really quickly by having that communication. So we'll continue, we've agreed that we'll continue to have foster carer forums in the future because they definitely are really helpful mechanisms to continue that communication and build relationships.
Thank you. Ian?
Okay, yeah, we meet with head teachers twice a week, which has been very important for them throughout the coronavirus response period. We've been able to refresh our wellbeing offer for head teachers as well. With that twice weekly meeting, we've been able to scope out how the education community comes together to provide advice, guidance, some practice notes to their colleagues across the education system in Warwickshire. Had a number of task and finish groups. Amongst tasks and finish groups has been blended learning, e-learning. And from that group, there are now a number of training modules on how a range of different types of software can be used for communication and for learning. Linked to that, task and finish group have done reviews of many, many different resources for distance learning. And those are now available, bookmarked reviews and links to software and apps for learning in the classroom. Big part of that commission work from the twice a week meeting as well has been around wellbeing for children and young people. And, you know, as was mentioned earlier on, the webinar programme has built and built and built in terms of level of participation. I'm absolutely astounded that we were getting up to numbers around sixteen hundred people motivated to participate in webinars on how best children could be supported going back to the classroom and how trauma and other impacts that children have had along the way could be best mitigated and supported by practitioners in the education sector. We continue with those twice weekly school leaders meetings. That's a big part of their wellbeing and community, but it's a big part of how they then work on and ask us to commission a piece of work to support practice over the summer and through the next academic year too. Don't want to miss out on any of the opportunities there are of the practice that has been emerging over the last three months, that we carry on those positive lessons, whether they make a difference for children, families and practitioners through this next year.
Thank you.
Margaret, if you want to come back in?
No, that's fine, thank you very much, Chair.
Okay. And to non-committee members who are in the meeting, if you do wish to speak, please do indicate. Jonathan?
Thank you, Chair, yeah. And I just want to say thank you to all the practitioners and staff, our staff in the children and families area. I think it's been some really positive things happening over the last few months that we already touched on. So, yeah, thank you to everybody that's been involved in those. I've got two questions. The first one is for John Coleman, which is what's been happening to our social worker recruitment, retention and workload, caseload over the last few months? I'm imagining it might have been fairly stable, but interested to hear kind of what's happening there. So that's the first question. And then the second question, as we kind of move from, this is to John, Coleman, Andy and Bud, as we move sort of out of foundation into the consolidation phase, what's kind of your biggest concern or challenge within your service that you think you're going to face?
Okay, in terms of recruitment, there hasn't really been any shift and, to be honest, positively. So people aren't leaving and tend to be staying where they are. We've, we've done a really good, we did a recruitment campaign right at the beginning of Covid for temporary staff, particularly looking to attract social workers, perhaps who'd retired or had left recently to come back to Warwickshire to work for us. So we actually, we had thirty applicants from that and fifteen of those, fifty, so fifty percent actually have been doing some work for us during Covid. So that's been really positive. And one or two of those will continue to do little pieces of work for us if they are willing to. So that's, that's good. So yeah, recruitment has remained, remained positive. I would actually say that during Covid, strangely, I probably had more staff during Covid than we did before Covid because we, sickness levels actually were relatively low and any posts that we have got vacant, we were able to recruit. So a really kind of galvanised approach, I think, across social work to kind of help and communities and I guess a bit of a coarse one, really, if you like, for a better description. So that was, that's positive. I think that going forward, what is our, in terms of, in terms of demand, demand at the front door in our Family Information Service and MASH. The Family Information Service has been really busy throughout this. They've sent out lots of updates, been a key telephone line and online resource for education and children. So they've had an increasing amount of inquiries, which is all, the majority of that has been Covid related, which is we've been able to respond to. Through the MASH, that has been, we have reduced, the amount of referrals coming in has reduced. It's what really our normal August levels, summer holiday levels. We had seen a very slight increase, but nothing notable since schools started to go back from the beginning of this month. So that is much lower. What I would say is the context of that is just to kind of understand, is to understand the whole story to it, is that just before Covid, schools would start to perhaps see that not as many pupils would attend in. We did see a significant increase in referrals to the MASH at the beginning of March. And we normally have, for example, about two hundred and fifty single assessments at any one time. And we actually had over five hundred at that point, so twice as much work, twice as much demand. So it kind of certainly went up and then it's gone back down again and it's stayed stable throughout this time. We continue to support families and our, but our caseloads, our social workers have reduced. The average caseload of a social worker today in Warwickshire is fifteen, one five. So that is much lower. We were sort of between seventeen and eighteen before the pandemic started. I think in terms of the biggest issue, it probably is that issue of demand really. The likelihood of demand increase in the future is significant. And my view is that in terms of the numbers, an increase in referrals, we would be able to cope with that. We've got the staff ready, waiting to take that. But it is the complexity. We are seeing an increase in more referrals around domestic abuse, around sexual abuse, around the serious incidents of issues that are happening for children. So it's not, the numbers wise, we've got the resources in place to deal with that. The complexity of some of these situations has, not necessarily just because of Covid, it is a related factor, but not just because of that. We are seeing an increase in complexity. But I guess that, so that's one issue. I think the second issue that would be an area that we're looking at really carefully and working across the council and with partners on, is the impacts economically for our families. So there's been a huge increase, there has been an increase in universal credit applications. We've got a really good programme, which I'll send a briefing about actually to members about something called, something called the Breakthrough Project, which is something that we're completing, that we've already had in place. It's a project that supports parents back into work and getting them work ready. And we're delivering that with the Department of Work and Pensions, Children's Services and the CAB, Citizens Advice Bureau. So we are making preparations around, around how we can support our families with the financial impact. And we're also strategically looking again at revitalising our child poverty strategy and looking at that too, which is obviously a key part of that. So I think those are the biggest demands. I'm sure there are others, but that's the two that I would point out in a minute.
Thank you. Jonathan?
Thank you, yeah, that was a really thorough, helpful answer. Well, on that increasing complexity that you're seeing on domestic and sexual abuse, what can we do to prepare for that? Is it about training or specialism or what's, what can we do about that?
I think that domestic abuse wise, we, you know, we've got a domestic part of our recovery, transformation part, which I'll talk about later on the agenda. We've got a domestic abuse team and we're extending that. So actually a lot of our investment is in the areas where we anticipate seeing an increase in demand. And we are, you know, we've got, we're working really closely, I guess, with our partner agencies because I think that's a key element. So for example, the increased sexual abuse or domestic abuse. We need a joint response between, with health and the police in particular. We're having a really good relation, we've got a really good relationship with both of those agencies, having weekly meetings with them to look at how do we need to work together to manage the demand, manage the support. We have to provide additional training and advice around those areas to our staff and partner agencies. And the police have, during Covid, the police have gone live in the south of the county with a team called the CAT team, which is basically a child abuse investigation team. So it's something that we've been working on with them for some time and we're really pleased that that's come to fruition. Because having officers, police officers who are specialists in child protection and been able to work together with our social workers has really, will enhance our response to those, those services and those issues, I think. And we've also got a really good communications campaign happening about spotting the signs of these things and reporting incidents to us.
Thank you. Jonathan?
Great, thank you. Yeah, and then just finally be interested in hearing from Ian Bud on the challenges and concerns in the consolidation phase.
Okay. For me, two key words, wellbeing and recovery. On wellbeing, there's a meaning behind that in relation to the educational workforce, schools and support services. And there's a meaning behind it for young people themselves. You know, in schools, they've stayed open through what would have been the Easter holidays, through half term. There's been so many adaptations, both for the school workforce and for support services. I've often had to use the mantra, it's a marathon, not a sprint. So it's very important over the summer that they have a chance to recover, reflect on what's gone well, what's not gone so well, and set themselves up for the year ahead. And then what we've also done a lot of ways, make sure, whether it's for our central teams or for the workforce in schools, they've got access, signposts and encouragement to wellbeing support where people need that because of their personal circumstances and how the adaptations and the situation has affected them adversely. All of which is on the wellbeing side there. We touched on some of the wellbeing side though, in terms of children, young people. And it goes back to old mantras again, that if children feel secure around what they can expect when they're back in the school environment and in the learning environment, they'll be in a better place to be able to benefit from the curriculum offer and learning through this next year. So there's been a lot of work on communications, what to expect back in the, in the school environment. And that work will continue. Lots of social media and media work in relation to transitions. Children were doing the transition points in their education around what to expect for September as well. Also these three months as well, John and I, with colleagues, have had a virtual cell using Teams on how we can adapt our services and our approach to make sure the wellbeing of our most vulnerable learners is supported. And some of those lessons will stay with us for the long term future from here. On the recovery side, we touched on, because we're still awaiting information for what the next year will look like. Once you are beyond a blended learning offer within individual schools, onsite provision with access to e-learning around the school day, there is a national scheme which is being mobilised in terms of tutoring to support those who've missed out on significant chunks of the curriculum in the run up to their exam years. We need to look in great detail as to what that looks like and do a little bit to support its mobilisation for September as well.
Okay, thank you. Jonathan, do you want to come back in again or are you?
No, that's fine, thank you very much.
Okay. Check with Dominic, your hand was up and hers down, are you still wanting to speak or?
I do, yeah, I took it down because you already noted me, so I didn't want you to be overrun with hands.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chair. I want to echo some of the points that other people have made. As a father with two kids in local schools, I've been really impressed with the work the county has done. We feel really supported as a family. And so I just wanted to say thank you very much for the work that yourselves have done, and the officers and obviously passing it down to head teachers and teachers. I've got three questions, I'm going to keep them as precise as possible, two for, two for John. It's my understanding that we, before kind of the lockdown, we were looking at employing a senior youth worker. There was a pot aside for one million pounds for projects that the voluntary sector could bid for. That was very much going to be involved, young people, the youth council in particular. I see that as still a really, really, really important role. Certainly engaging these people in, in post-Covid projects. I just want to know, has that post been filled or are we still actively recruiting for that? And is that, is that pot of one million pounds still available? Also to John, just a quick one about the GRIIT, the Mental Health Support Early Intervention project that's ongoing. I heard you mention just a minute ago that referrals are increasing for supporting mental health for young people. But I'm being told that that particular group only has two active members. So I just want to understand how is that relationship building being done between the group and people who would be signposting and making referrals to it, like social workers, for example? And just one quick question to you, Ian, if I may. Just looking at kind of our post-Covid world and how education is going to work, I've been liaising quite closely with the head teachers who are in my particular county division. And one thing we've been talking about is the provision of extra space, utilising places like community centres and so on. Trustee of a local community centre, which is just down the road from the school, we already volunteered that if necessary. I know particularly in Stratford, the RSC, the Royal Shakespeare Company, have some quite large spaces that could be utilised. Now, they're not opening now until maybe the new year or even March. The CLOR education facility, which is on Waterside in Stratford, is perfectly set up for working with, with young people. So I'd just be interested to know whether any conversations have been had with groups such as this? And any plans have been put in place? So when we get to September, we can really hit the ground running? Thank you. Thank you.
Hey, so I can in first then. Interestingly, we were involved in a number of conversations around community facilities that could be brought into use, plus of course, a number of commercial approaches in terms of temporary accommodation and tents and mobile classrooms, as you might have expected in this circumstance. Then at the start of last week, there was very, very clear guidance from the DFE guidance, to say that schools should not expand their accommodation, certainly before September, that they should make any wider opening, return to school plans based on the current school accommodation, and then await further information for September. And along the way, part of that information for September that we could reasonably expect is some detailed guidance on how social distancing will be balanced from September onwards. Now, there's a lot of discussion at the moment around whether social distancing protocols would change, whether the concept of bubbles would change, so as they become what in the past would have been the whole class, but working as much as possible with a single teacher. So that's a long way around the saying. Schools are now not encouraged to expand their accommodation and suddenly not before September, although we have a couple of pot.
I think you might have lost connection.
We have lost, we've lost in. John, did you want to come in and hopefully establish a connection?
Sure. So in that, as to the youth work, what youth work are you working on? The answer is yes, we are continuing to recruit that post. So it's a £1 million fund that also pays for that youth worker. So it's just under a million that will be able to distribute to community and voluntary organisations. The plan is that we'll have that up and running to, ready for September to start that distribution. During Covid and over these last few months, we've been doing quite a lot of preparation work with community and voluntary organisations and working with our data team as well about, you know, where are the gaps in youth provision? Where are the issues that we're seeing in local communities and what are the gaps that we're looking for, for voluntary community organisations to fill and help them start to prep for their thinking around that. So that, that's in progress. And the recruitment should be completed within the next month. In terms of your question about the, the mental health work, I'll come back to you on that. I wasn't aware there was only two members on that group, so I certainly will pick that up and I'll come back to you in some more detail. We are working really closely with RISE. We have seen some very serious incidents with young people around their mental health and are offering lots of support to them. There are telephone lines, the Stratford Youth Forum did a really good video online, which we're back to launch, probably launched yesterday, I think, on social media, encouraging young people to really engage in support and don't suffer in silence if you need support, if you're worried about something, talk to teachers, talk to social workers or call the 24/7 RISE helplines. So I'll, I'll come back to you and talk to you a bit more about the specific group and get some more details on that.
Okay, thank you. Like, I don't know if you can come in if Ian is still not with us and address some of the points that Dominic made.
I don't think I've got anything else that I can add.
I can add, if Dominic wants to remind me of his questions, because I've lost track of them from where he's gone.
Yeah, it's just literally about, I've talked to a number of head teachers in my kind of county division and they're already looking, looking at developing plans and provision for extra space, basically, depending on the social distancing guidance when, when the schools open in September, whether that's utilising community centres, working with groups like the RSC and so on. I know Ian said that we have had guidance from the DB about that. I'm just, I was going to come back to him saying, I'm just a little bit concerned that the goalpost has been moving quite a lot and I, I can appreciate you guys are very much playing a catch at game, very much doing some firefighting. But if we follow that guidance to the letter and park this idea of not looking at extra provisional space, things could change in October, November, when we might have a, unfortunately, a second wave. So I'd just be interested to know, are we parking that idea completely or should we be doing the legwork now? So if we have a rock side plan and a relationship in place that we can introduce if, if necessary?
Yeah, thanks for that. I, I think you've got the balance right, actually. I think before the announcement, the plan was to keep, to have these conversations, to start to engage on those bases. The announcement has meant that you can't make any commitments on the basis of that because we don't know what the situation will be. But that doesn't mean we stop having the informal contacts or the lining things up, the behind the scenes work, like, there is no reason why that can't continue in case, as you say, that the situation changes either for September or once we get into winter.
Yeah, thank you, Nigel, thank you.
Ian, are you back?
Yes, yeah, sorry. Yes, sorry, the connectivity dropped, a rare event. But yes, Nigel was spot on there. The preparatory planning is still going on and there's at least one risk assessment that has been of sufficient standard. And there's unique use of an off-site facility that has been authorised. But then we'll, we have that planning in place and we'll continue to look at what happens on the national scene around arrangements for the autumn.
Thank you.
Anything further, Dominic, or are you?
Now happy with that. Cheers, thank you.
Dan?
Oh. Yeah, yeah.
We can.
Right, so let me know if it goes through, because I've got that five mics here somewhere, but this one should go on. And apologies if I ask something that's gone over. I was, I was on the phone to Chris a couple of times, I don't, I heard bits and we come out a bit. So yeah, so if there's any answers, everyone, drop an email if you can, Dominic. But on that to go forward, where we've gone over the volunteers, I miss most of that. One of the things we've seen from now going forward, I've had a lot of volunteers and I just haven't utilised as much of what people, how much people can do. And I've got databases, I've been texting people and all sorts of things, getting help with various people. There's still a lot of people who want help with all sorts of tasks that I think they don't know if they can ask, or just general small tasks, whether that isn't going to the pharmacy or get food. Some people ask to have a recycling bin, but I'm not a massive donor and it's too much to live in. If, if we've got anything that we could, we can do as an organisation or individually to, to help workers or use people, that'd be really useful. So I've done, I've contacted the county, I've contacted volunteer, our carver, a couple of people, but still there's a massive list of that want to be helped with, that just haven't been utilised. And obviously, as an individual, it's really difficult when some of these people, if I know them, I've previously worked with them or colleagues and colleagues or stuff like that, and I know where, who they are and their works, but it's not so bad because they're kind of good to help and hopefully it has been okay. But obviously not known from my point of view, I've got, I want help, but I've not used people because obviously I don't have to be just a random person to contact to ask to help somebody. As I say, without, without banking, I would say, or someone to get an EBS to them, it's kind of different. And obviously, I know we've got a national platform, there's been issues with that and some people, for whatever reason, just want to be out doing things now. So any advice on that or any help we can do for that, or if anyone can use the volunteers?
If you've got any queries around that, then it's probably worth speaking to Charles if you haven't already, I'm sure you probably have. But there are other volunteer schemes too, so care leavers, we're looking for grand mentors to be supporting our care leavers. Barnardo's and the children's centres have got a volunteer scheme as well. So it's perhaps something about utilising, keeping the momentum of volunteering in those, some of those schemes too. So certainly we can, we are looking and we can send any specific details around that if that will be useful. In terms of RISE, we do have a comms, a lot of young people do use social media. We're using Spotify and all sorts of things now, which I don't know anything about particularly, but I'm told I've got some really good hits on those. But you're right, not everyone has access to computers, as we talked about earlier on. So getting posters and things like that will circulate those as well to members so that you can distribute them too.
Nigel, do you want to come in?
Just really quickly, if I may, Chair, just to say that the, the use and continuing, continuing engagement with volunteers is very much part of one of the strands of the recovery programme. So there is actually a cell that has that included in it as part of its community work. So I think the opportunity to feed into that would be really helpful and any kind of information, both ways really, I mean, get information out from there, but also anything that you want to share with them. And Charles is probably a good link, would be really helpful.
Dan, want to come back or?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, just that's, I've spoken to Charles a couple of times as well. But I think it's just the pure scale of everything. I think people get missed and it's just making sure people are doing stuff really. There are, there are still volunteers and it's just, you know, if people need stuff, there's not knowing when they are being used. So again, any, any links you've got to different people, happily speak to. And then the only other thing I was going to ask for is Barnardo is a one, I spoke to them a couple of weeks back, I think they called me, they called all councillors. Chatted to them for a while, but any organisation like that, like Barnardo's and other people that are looking for volunteers or help with things, if we could maybe get a list of these, so we could maybe contact themselves or to put people in touch with them. As I say, you can help people locally, you can deliver shopping and get bits, but even going forward, like mentorship or people and speak to people, so many people want help but don't really know who to speak to, to get to use the help. So any listeners would be really, really good.
Right, Keith, thank you for your patience. I know you've had your, your hand raised for a while. Please come in.
Yes, sorry, I'm not on this committee, but I was, what came in to watch. Two things I just want to raise. One is the new school capacity that's supposed to come in in September. If that's being progressed, okay, because we've got a reception year class coming to Weddington. And secondly, what's happened with third education colleges, which seem to be a bit of a missed out section from all the various bits of help. And I think that'd be very important for the recovery is the secondary schools, you know, the Kegs and the North Oxford Tech. Thank you.
Ian? Okay, perhaps unusually, Yorkshire's FE sector have been very closely engaged with us from the first week of Covid. So they've been very much part of the weekly meetings alongside school representatives and early years representatives as well. You know, as I mentioned earlier on, one of the early requests from those meetings was that we put some detailed guidance together on how best to manage transitions for young people, so as they were supported in the transition to the FE learning environment from school, as well as the more obvious one we often refer to, which is around starting school and the transition from primary to secondary school. So a lot of work's gone into managing transitions. And other than that, I think FE being missed out might be more of a national lens on things because they've been very much part of the planning all the way through locally in terms of wellbeing, information around curriculum, learning opportunities, very much part of things locally. There was some coverage at the weekend, I believe, around some of the funding announcements on recovery at national level, not involving the early years sector and not involving the FE sector. So I think that one may still play out in the weeks ahead, not this with the representations that are being made from the sector organisations on national funding models.
Okay, thank you. Keith, do you want to come back in?
The point about the new school capacity not being mentioned, you know, we should have a new reception class in Weddington and things. So I wanted to check all that was still going on and we're still doing expanding where there's more housing.
Short answer on that one is yes, but happy to provide information on any of the projects on the programme.
Okay, I don't think there's any more members who have indicated to speak. Pam, your hand was up but is down. Are you wishing to speak again? Is that as a no?
No, that's fine, thank you. All right, thanks.
Blake, you have a hand raised. You're on mute.
Aye, sorry. I'm Chair of the Diocesan Board of Education, so when it comes to communication, if, you know, so if you want to send anything, I can make sure, we can get them out to churches, you know, so it's non-religious, so, you know, so we can get them out. But it'd be a good way of perhaps promoting, especially with churches opening up now, we could put posters in, in porches and goodness knows where else that might help. So, you know, any, anything, please send it my way or send it to the DB.
Thank you. I'm sure we'll be taking up. Keith, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Right. Thank you then to Nigel, John and Ian. I'd like us to have a quick break before we move on. It's now nine minutes past eleven. Let's come back at, aim to recommence the live feed at twenty past, let's try and get everyone back here in six or seven minutes. My advice to, to members and participants is to mute your microphones and turn your cameras off until you're sitting back in your place. But it's a warm day, I think everyone should go and get a glass of water. Okay, quick break.
You okay there, Grace?
Oh, click and mute a minute. If you click the little microphone again, you've gone to mute if you can hear me. Can't hear you.
Councillor Williams, if it's helpful, yes, on, on your screen, if you hover over your screen, it should bring up a little black bar showing a video camera sign and then a microphone sign to the right of that. If you press on that button where it says unmute on the microphone, you should be able to speak and be heard. It's a sort of a slightly greyed out bar at the bottom of the screen. If you hover over or use your finger to sort of activate your screen, it should enable you to unmute your microphone. There you go.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you now, councillor. So we, we can mute you, but we can't unmute. That's one of the difficulties of helping with the meetings. We're able to unmute you, sorry, to mute you if, if there's background noise, but we can't then switch your microphone back on for you.
Chair?
Yeah, just to voice me in. Hello, Helen.
Just to let you know that obviously the live streaming paused as well while we took a break. So we'll just need to give it a couple of seconds to restart when everyone's back.
Sure. News, you are acting as, turn their cameras back on. That'll be helpful.
They will.
Complicated things.
I'm back. Thanks for putting the dust up, Helen. That's great help.
No problem.
Difficult to get them on the screen otherwise, you need to switch between.
Yeah, no, I understand that. I'll put the next one up as well when we get started. Thank you. Chris Williams, you've got your screen shared at the moment. So I can only see your screen. Other than what else?
Yes, I'm the same.
Chris Dan, Dan Hillcrest.
I don't know if you can unshare it, Helen.
I'll give it a go, hang on. I think Dan's got the biggest microphone I've ever seen.
I don't think it's one of the settings available towards, is it?
I've requested control of this.
Oh, okay.
Could you share your screen?
Yeah, then, yes, mine just don't ride in. Oh, yes.
Well done, everybody. Can I check that Ross is with us?
It's Dwayne, not Ross today, so yes, I'm here.
Sorry, who, sorry, I missed that.
Yeah, hi, it's Dwayne, so I'm the new head of service for Centre Inclusion.
Right, okay.
Judith, I am here, but I'll let Dwayne answer the questions as she's my manager. But I am here for any queries.
Brilliant, thank you. Are all committee members back? Do we know?
I'm here. I think so. Let me check.
I'm back.
Or you could briefly unshare your screen, Helen, and then we can see us.
Great. Pam was here. Brilliant. Dominic Corrin, okay.
Hi, Howard, we can see you now.
Okay.
The broadband keeps, the broadband keeps coming in and out, so if I switch the picture off, I can maintain what I can hear.
All right, okay.
It's the joys of living in a rural area.
People have joined us, I think. Okay. Okay, well, I think we I think we should get going, Helen, and then
Yeah.
Keith will come back in a minute.
We'll just get the YouTube channel broadcasting again. Dagdie, are you able to start the stream and please? Just checking.
Just standing down the back?
We're back.
Okay, welcome back, everyone. We're on to agenda item five, which is the Send and Inclusion Change Programme. And I believe Dwayne is going to speak.
Yes, hi, hi, everybody. So thank you, Chair. So I'm new to Worcestershire County Council, I've just taken a post about fourteen weeks ago. When I joined Warwickshire, looking at the designated school grant, part of the grant that we use for sending inclusion is the High Needs Block. And the High Needs Block at the moment, in this sort of last financial year, is about 5.2 million overspent. When we look at the change programme, what we want to do in terms of the change programme is, one, make sure that the Empower Report that looks at changes in behaviour is developed and driven through. Two, to bring the overspend that we have in the High Needs Block into balance. And three, to look at the strategy that we consulted on last year. And as well as that, bringing in a sustainable system that is fairly equitable and transparent across Worcestershire for all our children and young people. So we are working on a DSG recovery plan in terms of meeting the balance of that over the next three years. And whilst we're working on the DSG, we can actually see that in the next few years we can bring that five million into balance. But unfortunately, what we can't do is just stop the spenders coming out. So the cumulative overspend in the DSG is quite significant. So what we're proposing in terms of the Send Change Programme is that we pull together the four strands of work, which is the Empower Review, the DSG Recovery, the DSG Sustainability and the Send and Inclusion Strategy into one change programme. So that's sort of the broadness of it. I'm happy to answer any questions anybody may have.
Just to kick us off, can you just assure me that we are making full representation to the Secretary of State regarding funding?
Absolutely, yes. So there's a letter that has gone out in terms of, to the Chancellor, in terms of funding, the level of funding. As colleagues might or might not know, this is a national issue. So we are playing. Also, what we are looking for is, unfortunately, the rules around funding has changed this year in terms of movement between blocks. And the council have been able to pay off any of the overspend through reserves. And the only way that we can do that is through disapplication by the Secretary of State and we will be looking at doing that as well.
Okay, thank you. Right, Corrin.
Thank you, Chair. I mean, you know, it's obviously not just an issue in our area, is it? It seems to be a national issue regards to funding of send education. And I was going to ask the same thing about whether we're sort of lobbying Secretary of State. Well, you know, assuming every council will be, because clearly there's not enough to deliver the education centre adequately. But one of the things that I'd be keen to, because obviously, you know, it's quite a motive area, isn't it? Any change to the education of young people in this area is going to evoke quite a strong feeling from families and parents, I would think, obviously from the children and young people themselves. And one of the things I would be, you know, really to make sure does really happen properly is that parents will be involved in their children's educational decisions. Because I think the fear is that, I guess, potentially we're going to have less children going out to special schools or active areas to be educated. And more young children and young people are going to be educated in their local schools. The fear from those families is going to be that their needs are not going to be addressed properly. And I think it would be something that I would want to really see that I know they may sometimes have maybe, you know, not understanding perhaps the new offer, but keen to make sure that parents and the young person involved are key in the decisions of where their education is going to take place. And the other thing is, I guess, is that, I mean, the main criticism with educating some children with SEND in mainstream schools is that there's just not enough support. And when I've spoken to parents, they've said, when it does work, it's great. But often, I know a local school that my kids went to and I was speaking to a parent there whose children have got Asperger's and autism. That, you know, they've got one SenCo who works part time. And when it's good, it's good. But when it's not and all the staff are not necessarily adequately trained in that area, then it's really not addressing the needs of those young people. My two things are, are we going to make sure that parents are involved in the decision making and the young people? And are we going to make sure that all staff and SenCos are adequate in mainstream schools to support young people when they're there?
Okay, thank you. Yes, I think if we look at parents and look at the Children and Families Act and the Code of Practice, parents and carers are central to the decision making and also the voice of a child and young person. In terms of choice, I think the choice needs to be around need-driven. The child's needs dictate whether needs should be met. The Code of Practice does say that we must place in the school of the parent's choice. However, what we also need to do is make sure that our local schools can meet the needs of the vast majority of our children, which leads me on to the second question about staff. In terms of the SenCo, SenCos should be undertaking the SenCo Award in terms of meeting children's needs and understanding SEND. In terms of the services we have within Warwickshire, what we need to ensure is those services we've got are enabling services. And for that is how do we support our schools to meet the needs of our children and young people? So I think it is about choice, but it's also about balance and driven. And, you know, we can actually work on ensuring that the centre of all that are our families are our parents and carers.
Corrin, do you want to come back in?
Yeah, just to start, are we going to be able to achieve this with what is a significant, you know, balance funding wise?
I mean, I've done the math and colleagues of Worcestershire Council have worked with me over the last few months. Are we going to meet the financial need? At the end of this journey, I still think there would be a gap, if I'm honest. Can we change the behaviours and practice of our schools and our key stakeholders? I think yes, we can. But we can only do that if we are there to support our schools in this journey as well. So, you know, in terms of changing behaviours, what we've got to do is put a support mechanism in. And therefore, you know, in terms of the services that I manage, I need to make sure that what they are delivering is what the community needs and what our school community needs. Which gets the capacity building in our schools and ensuring, you know, the training and support packages are in place. So I think it's doable. I don't think it's going to be done in the next six weeks. It's going to be a long journey, so we're looking at really immediate, long-term planning to sort of drive through this change.
Okay. Corrin, do you want to come back in again? No? Okay. But Dwayne, can I just add to the DFE paper that was released last month, which was the Special Educational Needs Analysis and Summary of Data Sources paper? So in that paper, it refers to figures nationally and states that now the number of young people with an EAC plan is rising again after several years of decline. Is that the case in Warwickshire in the sense of decline now to rise? It also says that secondary school numbers continue to decline nationally. Is that the case in Worcestershire? And also that the, of those young people with an EAC plan, the largest category is the autistic spectrum disorder, which is almost a third of the numbers nationally. Is that reflected here in Warwickshire too?
Yes, so in terms of Worcestershire data, we've been in an upward trajectory in terms of number of plans. And so last year we had a 16% increase, which is quite significant. That's certainly not in line with our regional statistical or national trends. So in terms of balancing skills, we need to make sure that, you know, our data matches our neighbours and our statistical neighbours. So yes, that's an upward trajectory. In terms of need, yes, I would say AST and SMEH are two of the most prevalent need. And the reason I say SMEH is because categorisation under the Code of Practice and SMEH will cover AST. So yes, in terms of trends there, we are on an upward trajectory as well. So everything you've read is really reflective of Warwickshire, yeah. But we can correct some of the balance, yes, we can.
But the secondary school numbers declining here in Warwickshire and primary school numbers increasing?
So our rate of inclusion in Warwickshire is not positive in terms of, we've got probably around a 50% inclusion rate at the moment. In saying that, you know, the trend is very much towards special schools. Our special schools are at full capacity. We have eleven special schools at the moment and there isn't a space base amongst them. Again, our youth of independent sector is big. So what we need to make sure is our needs for the vast majority of children can be met in our mainstream schools. Because that is probably the system. And therefore, the number of children going to specialist schools are the higher needs. But certainly, yes, I would say, you know, we are seeing a decline of children in our mainstream schools and an increase of children going into specialist.
Thank you. Margaret?
Thank you, Chairman. Yeah, just following up on the, I absolutely agree that ideally we would want our children to be educated as far as possible in mainstream schools. There are some fundamental issues though with this. If a child goes into a school with an EAC plan or has one while they're there, the school only gets part funded for this. They have to fund the rest of it. Now, where schools are really good at dealing with children with EAC plans, they tend then to be the first choice for parents who've got children with some sort of special need. So their financial problems get, the school's financial problems get worse and worse. Because they, obviously the children with special needs get priority on where they wish to go to school. Now, whilst these schools may want to welcome these children and can deal with them very well, they are not funded for it. And the schools gradually get more and more compressed as far as finances are concerned. So that's the first issue. The second issue, and I'll quote from 2.9, one of the points down there, "Often support is not accessed until a crisis has been reached, by which point interventions are more costly." And I think we have to somehow help these schools on the early intervention. Because I assume the only way we are going to get our costs down is to raise the bar over who can have this very special intervention. Which means more and more, we've got to try and get in early so that these early needs are met. And I can tell you from my work in schools, it does not happen at the moment. Schools scream for help and they don't get it. And the children really get to crisis stage and then it costs everybody a lot of money. It's got to be worth investing at that level. And my final point is on the measures, which you've got somewhere in an appendix, somewhere at the back. Where are we? Page thirteen or fifteen. Not one of the measures is about the response from the parent or the child. So surely our measures are So surely our measures of success should involve the service users, the people who actually are on the other end of our policy, to see whether they are satisfied. So please, can we see some of that?
Okay, so if I take your first comment about schools in terms of meeting needs. I mean, at the moment, what we are looking at is a local first policy and it is about fairness and equitable. And what you do find in the system is when a school is able to respond to children's special educational needs in a positive way, you know, we probably have a high proportion of families wanting to go to that school. Therefore, what we have to have is a fair system and we're all schools are able to do that. And in terms of the finance, I've looked at the finances since I've been here and part of the proposals that I've worked with colleagues with is to invest to save. So actually that we look at what we are funding our schools, in particular our mainstream schools, so that it is appropriate to the level of need of that individual child. So in terms of early identification, I absolutely agree with you. In terms of early identification produces the best outcomes for children and young people. When I've looked at the early years sector and that cohort of children, we can do more as a councillor to make sure we wrap around that level of support around that child so that when they are going to school, they are supported in the best way possible. In terms of the legislation around raising the bar, you are right. The Code of Practice is clear when it says the local authority must assess whether there may be a need. However, it does go on to say that the local authority can set its own criteria of who gets an education, health and care plan. So I have been working with my social care colleagues because they are education, health and care plans. And what we're looking is at the early intervention model they have got as well and how we link and do the golden thread between us all. And so there is between school improvement, family intervention services and my services, how we can actually put together a local offer so that we don't have to get to crisis point. So that's very much within the change programmes. It's also looking at colleagues in how we support our children as a multidisciplinary team and services so that we can get in at earlier stages. So in terms of capturing the voice of service users, absolutely in terms of success criteria. But again, there is a balance between measuring expectations as well. And at the moment, you know, the expectations of what an education, health and care plan can provide needs to be managed very finely as well. So absolutely, we will be using all indicators to measure success. But I will say in terms of children with plans for Warwickshire, we are in a downward trajectory on outcomes. So we actually do need to work with our schools to ensure that the outcomes for children and young people with plans are good or better. So it is about good practice and it is about ensuring that we're there to support our schools to meet and our families to meet the outcomes we require.
Can I just say though that I think, you know, that's great, that we do need to, in terms of the outcomes, there is some financing. I know that's not within our control, but we should be lobbying government on the finance for health and care plans. They have to be supported properly in schools so that the schools can deliver those outcomes. I have to say, I've got every sympathy with the county, with you and your job. But I am really concerned. What we're actually saying here is that we've got children with needs and we are going to raise the bar on those needs. So the children that used to get the plans and get the support are no longer going to get them. Let's be honest, that's what we're saying. The children that used to get them are not going to get them because we're going to raise the bar.
Not at all, not at all. And when you look at our education, health and care plan, it should be for those children with the most severe needs. Because what we should be able to do is the vast majority of children should have their needs met in school through the graduated approach. And by the graduated approach, I'm talking about the assessed plan due review. At that stage, a child can stay at that stage throughout their whole schooling. But we need to make sure those children are absolutely, absolutely need a plan, get a plan. And that plan and that support is put in at the earliest opportunity. We also need to make sure that where we have given plans, there is a reviewing cycle, which we have got, that's the annual review, to make sure that those needs are still at that level. If they are, they'll be continued, we revise the packages, we look at the needs of the child. So this is not about not meeting the needs of our children. But we also have to have skilled staff as well with the strategies and the tools in our toolbox and the support mechanism to be able to meet the children. Because needs are greater now, children are living longer. They are being born and, you know, technology is aiding, you know, to children to live longer lives. So we do need to have skilled workforce as well as putting the right support in at the right time. So I don't think it's about raising the bar unexpectedly. You would expect the top one to three percent of the population to have a plan.
Yes, absolutely we would. But the children, some of the children who have currently got a plan under our new cost saving measures probably wouldn't get them. And we would expect them to be, I think, your graduated plan or whatever it's called, in school. And that would be ideal if the schools were funded to cope with this. I am really, really concerned that there are going to be some children squashed in the middle here who aren't going to get a plan and where the support is not in school. And it's very worrying. Those children deserve the best we can give them. So I don't know where we go. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Margaret. Dan?
Yeah, thank you. Margaret actually covered a lot of points, some really good points and probably said it better than I would. But one of the things I wanted to talk about was obviously funding. There's more on CAMHS and Toms, but funding, I didn't realise until recently. I heard about the schools and I knew that, you know, they've got more funding. But I didn't realise that early years also have to come up with funding for, they've got a child with special needs and they have to go with funding. So I was contacted by a nursery, a local nursery recently, and they've got a child with special needs, all sorts of needs and they've got to make some adjustments. It's going to cost a lot of money and I think we helped them out with grants and put them into touch with charities that can help. But still, they're a non-profit, they struggle anyway. This is just before Covid, so they're struggling more, but they need to come up with the funds. And one of the issues was with this, they're a nursery in Warwickshire. It's a private company, I'd say not for profit, but they're on county council land. So this particular nursery is probably quite unique. But this nursery has an issue with the landowner and the rent and the whole situation, which has been looked into by legal. We can't probably go into all the details, but the issue is that it's taken probably two or three years, this legal issue, because there's an issue with who owns the actual land that the county school is on or part of that land and it's an issue. But as the school is the landlord and there's been issues with the rent, they haven't dealt with rent and problems with the building. They've not maintained it properly, but obviously the nursery are paying an absolute fortune. They're kind of in this, they're stuck in this space where they're struggling for funding and they've got issues, but the county can't help too much until this legal issue is sorted. So they're stuck really. And obviously this child is going to start the nursery probably September now anyway. So they've had a bit of leeway. But obviously that leeway is hitting them financially because their staff still needs paid. So it'd be nice to know what support they could get. And I know that is quite unique, but it's just the whole legal issue. Or your emails are open. Your emails on the screen, Helen, if you hadn't realised. But, thank you. But yeah, so the whole legal issue going on with this building and their rent is probably going to take a long, long time to sort out, I'll admit it. With loads of red tape, it will take a long time. But what can they do in the meantime to get help with the issue that they're struggling with? Obviously, because the child will go there and will need additional care, but they need support with that. And so until their finances are sorted out and the building's sorted out, they can't probably adequately look after this child. And if something did happen, the child was injured and obviously they're held accountable, that would be, they would probably close if they suffer financially. But obviously the main thing is the child's love for her and making sure they can give them a decent level of education for what they're doing. But they're struggling for support. So I know that's quite unique. If you want to come back with an email, that'd be great and we can go into details. And that's probably a bit lengthy for what I actually want to talk about, but it is a big thing. And the second one, back to page 40, where we talk about the, oh, sorry, I didn't. Page 40, where we talk about the time for CAMHS being put down for six weeks. I would like to know more about where the figures are coming from and who they're reporting from and obviously the triggers. So is the trigger the day CAMHS input the details into their system as a referral? Or is it coming from the GP? Because I did notice once there was, I think, a two-month date of CAMHS replying to someone from a GP's referral. The GP had sent it off first class post. Two months later, that came from saying there's been a referral. I probably got a daughter running around. But yeah, so the referral was two months. And obviously, is that length of this date? I know I'll happily share my personal experiences with my children. One's been waiting for 18 months. And again, I've been told that some of the figures are reflected because if they're under ASD or ADHD, it's neurodevelopmental, that the figures will be slightly different. But if that is true, why are we kind of ignoring that? Because it comes to the same thing. Why aren't we ignoring that? Why don't we publicise that more and maybe lobby for more help? Because there's a lot of parents that until they get that support or until they get that assessment and anything else, they can't get the things in place. And again, the schools obviously struggle and they've got children that have more needs than others. But what we've experienced or heard from a lot of parents as well locally is that some schools aren't really, they don't seem equipped for some of the issues they're dealing with. They don't understand some of the problems that their children have. But also the lack of communication, even when the healthcare professionals have asked for, asked a couple of questions for school, there's nothing back. And obviously, I know they've got a Senko, they've got someone to speak to, but not all the time. There's not always the support from the actual teacher as well. They don't really understand what's going on. So one example, I will be quick to argue because my children are running around. But one example was my son, he's got ADHD, he's got Tourette's and he can't sit still, but he'll make out noises. And so at school, he had brilliant support at the previous school, went to the primary and he started getting into trouble and told off by his teacher. And there's a few things, like he's making silly noises in class. But when I spoke to the teacher after about that, he said, he'd make a funny noise when they were all quiet. And I said, well, he's got a condition. And not saying he can get away with shouting at your class, that's completely different. But there was no kind of understanding of what the condition was or what can trigger that and probably the best way to deal with that. And that was worrying, obviously, that's one case and we've got support. And we understand that, but a lot of families don't get that support and I think they probably give up or lose faith. And obviously, if the child starts getting into trouble and someone doesn't recognise that it's not necessarily them being naughty, they get in trouble for a condition they can't help. Then early on, we're putting that child, you know, in the wrong mindset for going to school. If they start getting into trouble and don't get help and it's missed out, you know, we're not setting them up in a great position, are we, for high school and for further life? And honestly, going into high school is completely different. And it's where a lot of people fall apart and they've got autism themselves and they've got ADHD or ASD and they really, really struggle. So it'd be good to get some more support from the teachers and some more understanding. Also, the lack of involvement, which sometimes between the parents, the school and healthcare professionals is huge because there's literally no communication you just go in between the two. But I think as well, something where we could have some support when it's needed. Because some children won't need a lot of support and they've got great support at home or their condition means, you know, they don't need a great deal of support, but just a nudge now and then or maybe a question here and then. Or someone to go to, if that makes sense, I'm waffling my rages. But it would be great to know if these children aren't missing out because currently they are in a lot of cases.
Yeah, okay, thank you, thank you, Dana. So if I just address the early years at the moment, so the early years in terms of the funding mechanisms is slightly different because they're funded through the NEC funding. So that's the early years grant funding. In terms of support, there is an inclusion fund for our early years settings and that sits within my services and that comes from the High Needs Block. So that is to meet the needs of children, again, through the graduated approach, through the assessed plan due review. What I can't do today is comment on that individual case. I hope you understand that. I would need to have more details and look into it and then obviously formulate a response. In terms of meeting children's needs, you're absolutely right. We need to look at what we're doing with schools, we need to look at what we've got, what I define as a local offer. And I'm not talking about a website, I'm talking about what do we do as services, offer our children, young people and their families as a universal offer. And again, you know, within the change programme, I will be looking at services with a view of saying, what are we doing to deliver? And are we getting there early enough? And do we need to change what we're delivering so that we can have a wider spread? Yeah? In terms of the finances and, you know, there isn't a bottomless pit of finances. So we have to work with what we've got and make sure what we've got, we use wisely. In terms of the CAMHS data, I'm going to call on Ross because he's the expert in this area the more. And maybe he can ask you about the timeliness of CAMHS. Ross, are you able to answer the CAMHS question?
Hi, Dwayne. Yeah, so in terms of the data we get from CAMHS, it's passed across, so it's part of the RISE contract. And that's part of how we work across the council with our commissioning teams in sharing that data. RISE is also represented on our Centre for Inclusion boards, we work with them. And in terms of going into kind of matters about RISE, I think there are successes, there are some challenges as well. I'm not sure this is the forum to go into that on, but in terms of where that data comes from, it comes through the contracting and it's the point at which they receive the referral. The particular measure there is the point at which they receive the referral, to which the first appointment is made. I think I would add to that, one of the, I think, I'm almost following on to your next point. The, one of the recommendations from INPOWER, one of the six projects they've recommended is a countywide SEMH campaign, Social Emotional Mental Health Campaign. And that's particularly looking at working together across the piece to support schools with those early emotional mental health issues, which I think we have a lot of work going on, some from RISE itself as part of that. They are now contracted to go across different levels, work with provincial watching minds to do that. Some schools have commissioned themselves and we've seen training in attachment and in trauma and other areas and public health have been working in this area as well. But I think it's clear that we need more coordinated activity in that area to be a clear offer to schools as well, as a clear local offer and also expectations of what we expect schools to do in that space and for those needs, a kind of early level. I'll pause there.
Nigel, do you want to come in?
If I may, just briefly, just to say that clearly CAMHS performance is something that this committee has picked up on a regular basis, if you like, and has reports at periodic intervals. I suppose one of the questions to me is, when we get to the work planning stage, if you want to look at when actually it would be helpful for a more overarching summary of CAMHS performance, because clearly that is possible. There is a lot more data than is shared in the inclusion strategy. So, you know, we can organise that when the committee would like an update. And there will also at some point in that timescale be the new autism strategy as that is developed. So there's been a kind of hold on that over the Covid period. But that's probably a next stage item for consideration by the committee too. And I think we can probably pick up most of Dan's questions and the actions about what is being taken to address those in that forum.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Dan, did you want to come back in?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, that Nigel's point is brilliant. I'd like to be involved in that and if we could obviously work on that and put things together. And I know obviously that's part of the contract, but it would be good to obviously get some answers and maybe work on how we can change that and maybe get the missing part in between maybe when parents had a referral, it's the waiting and what they can do in the meantime. And obviously, some schools are brilliant and they're different across the county. But some schools, you know, until a child has had a diagnosis or has met with someone, they won't help the parents in any way. Or, you know, they'll say we need some from a medical professional. And again, the issue we talked about earlier, the medical professional asking for the school for answers and just being, you know, ignored. And again, the issue we talked about earlier, the medical professional asking for the school for answers and just being, you know, ignored, never, never ever coming back to them for whatever reason. And it might be an issue of someone in the schools forwarded on to the person that should be dealing with it or somebody hasn't picked it up, but, but obviously there is that missing link and they've struggled. And the only other thing I wanted to mention about the, well, on the CAMHS issue is, I've brought this up again and again, is some of the people I've spoken to in CAMHS, like consultants and psychiatrists have said, you know, their, their diaries aren't completely full. They do have space and the issue is a lot of the time is with the admin side. And literally they're, they're getting people through the system and processed. Um, so I don't know if we can look at that and what we can do with, to work with them or when, when the I, I don't really know, but, but I say they, they, they struggle with the whole process inside of it for some reason. But they do have the staff there a lot of the time that aren't busy round the clock. So whether we could increase the admin help or if there's things we can do in the meantime or maybe they could, especially after Covid, you know, advance the way they speak to people instead of having these physical appointments that take a while and you know, a lot they could be doing for a meeting. Um, so I don't know if we can look at that, but obviously go into more detail. And, and again, I will come back to you, I can give you details in an email of the, of the childcare provider. I know they can't get into all the details of who they are and the child, but it would be good to put them in touch with you or get some support to take back to them. Um, and then the only last thing, um, I wanted to mention, only because I've not seen it on here, is, um, I've not seen it anywhere, I only see it really mentioned, is, I don't know if I'm missing it or it's something else, but IDS, so the Intuit Disability Service, um, and the work they do, first of all, is absolutely amazing. Um, my daughter has a teacher of the deaf and she's brilliant, she's in contact all the time and she'll be starting nursery soon. Um, and she will speak to the nursery. But I, but I think for a lot of families, I wouldn't be able to either, they're, they're not always aware of what services are, are there. Um, so, so my daughter was diagnosed with a hearing loss at birth. So for us, we had support from day one and obviously it was picked up on. But I spoke to a family over in Rugbywell from, um, a few weeks back. And they've got a daughter who's, I think she started, she started school last September, obviously hasn't been there for a while. But she's been going through the process of being diagnosed with deafness, obviously school hearing and all these kind of things. And she, she has a hearing loss. But there's not really, I think they've had some contact, a lot of point in touch with IDS. But obviously Covid has put a spanner in the works and it's everywhere. But not all families know where the support is, obviously if they're not headed from early, early on and the county aren't always aware, they're not under any kind of system. They're not always aware of where they can go to reach help. Um, so it would be good to get something, even if we just publish ourselves, um, to point people in the right direction of things and obviously a lot of the time people will go in and speak to schools and support them and that's, they do brilliant work. And sometimes the parents and their families might want to go and learn things. Um, but the only thing with that, um, some counties have Staffordshire put on, say, courses, sign language courses and basic courses, so you can do it in town where. And as far as I can see at the minute, there's not one in Warwickshire. There was one a couple of years ago where County City Council did that with Warwickshire. But I say things like that, just pointing people to things that they can do that are official, rather than kind of muddling through and finding sources that's not right or the right need for a private company. If we get some support for that or information, that'd be really useful.
So Daddy, in terms of the SEND change programme, part of that change programme is looking at our website and our, what we call the local offer. And our local offer should be where all that information is held and where all that signpost into services, um, is, is linked. And one thing I'm working with social care colleagues at the moment, because we really do have a fantastic local offer in our social care, uh, uh, early help for families. Um, and I've met with Marilla Kitchen to say, okay, how can we link that offer into the SEND offer? Um, again, you know, with the local offer, we need to make sure that it's up to date, that it's relevant, that the information, you know, is what families need and want. And also for professionals, because it should be the go-to place. So certainly, you know, um, it's about linking all that together. And again, you know, signposting to our peer care forum and to, um, a voluntary sector that can offer support. So when I looked at the, you know, social care offer at the moment, that, that is really good. Now we just need to have the golden thread between us all and join us all up. Um, but absolutely agree with you. When we look at deafness, what we know that that is a high need, low incidence. Um, part of the SEND change programme will look at, um, how we commission services, yeah? And whether, you know, there's an opportunity, there may be, there may not be, I haven't done that work yet, of linking with our other authorities. Because what we do know, our VI and HI children, young people, um, they don't give a cost off, but when they do, they, they cost. So in terms of the services, is there an opportunity where we can join services? Certainly I've come from Bristol and Bristol has a sensory support service, which was co-funded by four authorities. So, you know, I'm, I'm looking at all those opportunities to make sure we can widen, you know, our services to, to families.
Okay, thank you, thank you both. Jonathan?
Uh, thank you, Chair. Um, yeah, and first of all, I just want to say, um, that this, just acknowledging what a massive task this is. Um, and I think it's something as an authority that we're going to be grappling with for several years. Some of the numbers are frankly terrifying in terms of the finance overspends. Um, I think the positive thing to say about it is at least we're now beginning to look at this head on. Um, you know, we've got some of these numbers in front of us. Um, so as I think someone said, I don't envy your role, as you are. Um, so however, so my, the thing I want to say is, just picking up on what Margaret says, is some of the list of ways we can save money in that, it's on pay, in that table in the appendix on page forty-six of the, the whole document pack. Um, some of them do really make me worried that they look like they're managing demand down by raising the bar. Um, and so it says things like, um, need to make sure that our plans are in line with statistical neighbours and we're going to assume a reduction and that will save us naught point nine million pounds. Um, and that sounds like managing demand down by raising the bar. Now, a lot of the other ones that are raised, you raised, uh, listed as ways to save money are in that invest to save category. And I think could be really, really positive, like, um, addressing, you know, giving more to schools in a mainstream setting earlier, all those kind of things. Um, but I really, I'd quite like us, I don't know what the rest of the committee thinks, to really kind of formally register our concern about some of these measures are kind of that, what I call the cut end rather than the win, win-win end. Um, um, and I think probably what I would propose is trying to label some of those um, alternatives of these, these ones are the ones we don't want to do because they're actual cuts. These are the ones we really want to try and do because they're genuinely best to save and they'll be good for the children and good for our finances. And I think it'd be really helpful to distinguish between those and be really honest that ultimately the pot is only so big and we might have to end up with some of those cuts. Um, but let's, let's work out, let's leave them till last, if you see what I mean. And I think the positive, another positive thing is that our, as an authority, we were kind of faced with this decision a few years ago with children's services. Um, about the number of children in care and we, I think the administration deserves a huge amount of credit. They said, no, we are going to go for an investor save over three to five years. Can we invest in the number of social workers so that we have less children in care in future? That saves us money and helps children. And I'd really like to see, I've, I've put a figure on, like, what is, what would we need to invest as an authority to, to do as much of that investor save rather than the cut end of things? Um, and I'd like to kind of, I suppose, and I'd like to, I think formally feed as a committee, if other people agree with me, formally feed some of this back to Cabinet because we have got SEND going back to Cabinet. Um, to really clarify this distinction, um, between the kind of the cut send that we don't want to have to do and the savings that we do. Um, if that makes sense.
Dwayne, before you come in, can Colin come in, please?
Yes, yes, of course, Colin.
Thank you, I, I, I've been listening very carefully to this and to the various concerns that have been raised, but fully justifiable concerns, Margaret. Don't make justifiable concerns. Um, I think we've been dealing with SEND and, uh, and how, how we manage children that have SEND needs, uh, for a long time. Um, we are at a point where there isn't enough money in the system to effectively do everything we want to for every child in Warwickshire that arguably needs help. That's, uh, the cake is what it is. We've argued for a bigger cake. It's how we make sure that the cake we have available to us is distributed as effectively and fairly as we possibly can. Part of this strategy is not just managing the money and dealing with the schools forum and the DSG et cetera. It's going to be extending the conversation we have and changing that conversation. So we're changing the conversation with, uh, users, with parents, uh, trying to engage more with parents where we can. Changing the conversations with schools, um, and trying to encourage them to make more effective arrangements to cater for children with their levels of need. A few years ago, uh, we were losing numbers from our special schools because parents wanted their children to go to maintained school, maintained schools. Now it seems, uh, the trend has changed slightly and we are looking for parents wanting to take their children out of mainstream schools and put them into special schools. And we need to understand why that is and why, uh, children can no longer be as effectively managed and dealt with, uh, in mainstream schools. It is, as everybody is saying, a hugely complicated area. Dwayne is a very welcome addition to the team. Uh, there are some very good people in there, we, we know and love Ross some years ago. Uh, we, there was a, there was a lot of work to be done here over the next year or two. And I think the committee's involved, but in looking carefully at this and monitoring progress and helping advise Cabinet will be invaluable.
Thank you, Colin. Dwayne, do you want to come in?
Yeah, I mean, for me, it, it is about building confidence in the system. A child should not have to have a, a plan to have their needs met. And what we do find to, you know, it's not about raising the bar and not having children, but what we do find is because there are, there isn't confidence in our systems to provide that support, that parents are wrapping a statutory plan around a child. Um, if I give an example of speech and language, we know children and, and now use their parents' iPods or iPads in the conversation. So what we have to do sometimes is the graduated approach, yeah? Is get that child to go to school, um, have some interventions, professionals come in, check that child. And if you absolutely, absolutely need the plan, then that's the right thing to do. So it's not about taking something away. What we need to understand is when we are signing a child into a statutory plan, that is potentially twenty-five years now because the system is zero to twenty-five. And the costs that are associated with, with that plan need to be factored in. So it isn't about not providing support for young, for young people, it's making sure that the support that they need is there earlier. So the outcomes are improved and only those then, when that support has been done and it hasn't made the impact, do we say, okay, we need more specialists, higher levels of support. So for me, um, it is about changing the conversation, it is about changing the confidence, um, for, for school leaders to be able to know that we will support them to meet their needs. Um, but also for our families, because our families feel the only way at the moment they can get our support is to request an education, health and care plan. So it is that balance about saying actually, you know, what do we do as a council? And obviously we will do this in consultation with our, with our families and our key stakeholders.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the committee who want to come in? There's no indication. Sorry, Jonathan, do you have a follow-up question?
Yes, yeah, I'm, just, you just said, Dwayne, about that only if we really, really need a plan that we would that to, to go for and sort of the, the whole graduation approach. Surely that's what happens at the moment because, you know, a school has to put lots, lots and lots of, um, things in place first. They have to spend their national six thousand pounds on the SEND people. And it's only if all that evidence is in place that, that they can go, you know, that a school goes for a plan and then there's no guarantee it'll be granted. Um, so in a way, the incentive isn't there at the moment. Like, it's really hard for schools to do a plan and takes a lot of time and yet they still feel it's needed. So what, what is, what's going to, so what's going to be different? Um, because as I say, at the moment, that's, that, schools would say, well, that's what they, they do already. They only give children that really, really need a plan, a plan.
So not necessarily, I'll be honest with you, yeah? Um, sorry, something's popped up. Um, so it, it isn't always the case and, and therefore if we look at how send schools respond and if we look at the code of practice, the problem we have is the code of practice is slightly ambiguous. It says that a local authority must assess where they may be in need. Um, and therefore what we have, our referrals coming in, whereas clearly they haven't done the graduated approach. You know, and if you look at getting the EP service in and at the point that the EP service is called in very often, is at the point, as soon as our report is written, what happens is they apply then for a needs assessment. What I want to see is the strategy is being given by the EP services embedded, um, and actually delivered to the child. Um, but it, I suppose you have to sit on the panel and, you know, please welcome to actually see the, the amount of requests that come in because it is quite significant. And therefore what we need to be able to do is look at our, what I said is the universal services. What are we offering at our schools to support our schools? Um, it's similar with, with having a diagnosis. We shouldn't have to wait for the diagnosis to put the right support in for the child. Yeah, that child's need should dictate that level of support. So for me, it is about reviewing what our services are doing and we're looking at their delivery model to make sure that we can get in there at the right time. Yeah.
But presumably, sorry, if, if it comes to panel and the support hasn't been there, you don't, you don't grant the plan as it is at the moment, so there is that check and balance.
So it is a check and balance, but it's a very fine check and balance, Jonathan, because what happens is every decision that, that is made or every decision I made is, 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 um, open to tribunal now. So, um, in terms of that, what happens is the minute we say no to a needs assessment, yeah? Um, because the evidence is not there, parents, we have to open legally the right to tribunals and parents will register the tribunal. Well, we look at the cost to go into a tribunal over refusal to assess, yeah? Then we know it's not worth going to tribunal because actually the judges, more for not, will say you need to assess. So what's happening is that within that cycle of actually, we will say no, a percentage of refusal is high. But then what's happening is it slips into the other process of tribunals. Um, it, it is a very fine line and the code of practice in certain areas, i- i- you know, is very ambiguous, to be honest with you. Um, so therefore, you know, what we need is, is, is the confidence of schools to know that when we say no, they need to do a bit more. Yeah? Um, so, you know, it, it is going to be a difficult journey because there are lots of changes that are, that are required.
And so schools say, you want us to do more, but we're so stretched anyway, trying to cope, what, what are we going to be able to?
So for me, it is about, so I'm, I'm looking at the services to see what we offer for services as, um, as statutory services. What we have to do as a local authority because we're legally bound to do it. What we do as a traded offer, so what are we charging our schools for? Um, I haven't got the answers today because I haven't reviewed the services and I haven't done the cost analysis. But what I would be looking for is if we spend, then we need to save, yeah? And, and therefore, if, you know, if, if I offer X, Y and Z as, as a free service, what does that mean and what does that look like and what will that impact be? Yeah? So it's not necessarily about just giving money, it's about providing that support, um, at the right time for the right child and upskilling, um, you know, staff to be able to meet, um, emerging needs. And what I will say at the moment, the prevalence in Warwick is ASD and it is SEMH. But I come from a town where dyslexia was a common special need. So, you know, we've got to be responsive to the changes in demands of, um, of our communities as well. So it is, um, a complex piece of work, get, you know, getting this, um, right. But I'm certainly looking at, you know, every service and what we can do.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I don't know if Ross wants to come in about the Empower Report because that looks at the cultural behaviour aspects?
If I may just briefly, just to say that we can, in answer to your question, Jonathan, as well, the Empower Report, we did 80 reviews of EHC plans to see what could be done earlier. We did those reviews across the different agencies and included parents as well, and that informed their conclusions. Very happy to, we haven't recruited it as an appendix, it's a long document, we're happy to share it with members, and it kind of shows where some of the incentives are wrong in the system. And it shows that some of those cases where, certainly not all schools, but for some schools where actually because early intervention hasn't happened, that case then gets to crisis and then it does need an EHC plan, but it wouldn't have needed it had there been more early intervention measures. So I think I'm very happy to share that report to members of the committee and that gives a bit more context, I think, to some of the projects which are proposed.
Yeah, that'd be helpful, please. Dwayne, you referred to appeals and tribunals. So what's the most common type of need that's identified in incentive appeals here in Warwickshire? And also, what's the trajectory in terms of percentage increases year on year, perhaps the last five years in terms of number of appeals?
Yeah, so in terms of looking at Warwickshire, we're in quite a favorable position, the appeals hasn't been substantially high. I don't know if that's a good or bad thing, to be honest, because nationally, the appeals have quadrupled over the last few years, yeah? And therefore, is our system, if we just say yes, we don't challenge, we don't push back, I don't know because I've not unfortunately been here long enough to sort of get my head completely around that. It did, I think Ross had just posted something, they've gone from about 12 to over 40. I would say in terms of the vast majority of appeals I've seen around a refusal to assess, it's very often around sectioning plans and that's the naming of a school. You know, parents, I think they go through a journey and they lose confidence in our maintained school sector. Lots of families require and are asking for placements in £70,000 a year provisions. And again, you know, we end up in tribunal. Some of this is about, you know, the content of the plan. But, you know, it is an increase, but I wouldn't say it's increased here as much as it has nationally.
Okay, okay. Colin?
Yeah, thank you. I mean, probably some of this has been sort of answered early, but it was just the fact that I'm assuming that when a school applies for an educational healthcare plan, that it's because they also receive funding for that child, is that correct, Dwayne?
Yeah, yeah, so the funding mechanisms is done through the national funding formula, which is element one, which all children get. And then it's the notional, what we call the notional £6,000, and that is set in schools' budget as a graduated approach, actually, is, you know, to do that set plan due review. And then what happens when it gets to the sort of tier three, it is basically about that individual child's need and how best. And looked at the funding in our schools, I think there is an opportunity for us to invest in our schools a bit more. But again, we need clear if we're investing, what does that look like for the overall picture of our same cohort? So, yeah, the child would come with a pot of money once I, you know, so we've obviously incentivised schools to go for a plan because that's the way they can draw down funding. So we need to look at that and, you know, certainly the change programme will look at that and we will model some deliveries or different options really for our schools.
See, it just doesn't change the fact that, you know, schools are going to get less and they're going to be expected to deliver more. And I suppose from a, you know, a parent's point of view, that's a concern because it's not always, well, we all know, you can't, you know, you can't always do that. So I think that is concerning and that they might be encouraging less plans and therefore receive less funding.
Well, the notional money, the national funding formula comes up with that, you know, that formula, that's prescriptive anyway. And the notional money again is calculated and that. So, you know, when you're looking at the additional money that comes for that child, that money follows that child on element three, yeah? So if that child leaves that school, for me, it isn't necessarily just about money, it is about what support are we offering our schools to meet the needs of our children? And some schools do it really, really well and others perhaps need a bit of more encouragement, but we need to make sure that what we're offering across the whole of Warwickshire is equal, fair and transparent. And therefore, we can go back to the initial conversation of why is it one school gets a large cohort of children because they are good and they meet their needs well? I think all of us have a sort of moral and ethical duty to do that. So, you know, we will look at all smarties as we work through this change programme.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Colin. Right, I don't have any other members who've indicated to speak, so if anyone does want to come in, do say now. No? Okay. There are a couple of recommendations with the paper.
Sorry, Chair, I think Council, Corinna and Margaret L would like to speak.
Yep, Margaret, do come in.
Hi, thanks very much. I think that's been a really interesting debate and I really think we should put forward our thoughts to Cabinet for them to consider. And I like Jonathan's idea of looking at the proposed actions on this and categorising them into invest to save in one category. And then, I don't know what word we'd use, cuts, but we wouldn't use that word. Things that are going to be more challenging for the service and for parents and children and sort of have them in some sort of order where, you know, we do the least acceptable one last, if you see what I mean. So we hope then that the invest to save will pay off before we get to the ones that are really damaging, in our view. That would be really helpful if we could do that.
I mean, we get, absolutely, we can look at the change programme and Ross is working with colleagues around mapping all this out. And obviously, we have some quick wins, but I think for me, you know, it's not cutting, it's realigning and using our resources in the best possible way we have. What we do know is next year, we've predicted an £8 million overspend on this budget, the year after another £8 million, and the cumulative effect is quite significant. We have to develop a sustainable system and we have to spend within our means. Also, we are required to deliver reports to the DFE on how we are going to bring this into balance. So I fully accept the spend to save, but coupled with that, there have to be some decisions that are made as well that make sure when we do spend, it is because that need is absolutely, absolutely there.
Do you want to add anything, Margaret?
Oh, so Margaret.
Margaret, if you want to come in first?
Yeah, I do understand, I think it's a very difficult situation, but I just think at the end of all this, in the middle of all this, are children, you know, we are talking about children. And I know some of them could, would be much better off looked after in mainstream school and I understand that, but I just don't want to feel that we're missing, some children are missing out on what they really need. It's a difficult circle to square, so we're just pleading that you do your best.
I will, I promise you, yeah.
Jonathan?
Yeah, I don't think, Margaret, or certainly I was saying that we, because we have to, we have to try and find ways to manage the budget and we need to do that. So we're not saying we won't have to use some of those measures, but just to indicate somehow which ones we think are going to be the least palatable and which ones potentially, if we had the money available, you know, what level of money do we need on invest to save to be able to put some of those in place and avoid the least, the less palatable options? And some kind of gradation is, I think, what we're asking for so we can sort of understand that better.
Yeah, and we are doing that, we are actually looking at all the options. I've spoke to finance colleagues because some of the modelling that's going to need take in place and we will need stress tests and the ideas as well in terms of, you know, what pressures that will put. So, you know, we're certainly not taking this lightly and the journey is, you know, is going to be, it's not going to solve itself overnight, it will be a long journey. And I'm sure we will have far more conversations on this one today as we go through that journey, absolutely.
So Chair, could I propose that we feed back to Cabinet, like a form of feedback to Cabinet, something along the lines of recognising a huge challenge in balancing or managing this budget, but raising concerns about the impact that this, or some of the options possibly could have on the children, on, you know, on the, I can't think of the last word, just some kind of, something formal along that line that we can record back to Cabinet?
I agree with you, the members are happy with that approach. It's what I was beginning to scribble down on the piece of paper here, the recommendations, but yes, I think we should also highlight the need, perhaps we as a committee could also lobby ministers as well, maybe formally write or let's, I think, put something on there, but I know the leader has done that, I'm sure the forefitter has as well, and senior officers will be liaising continually with the DFE, but let's do this as a committee as well. But to formally highlight the comments made today by committee, I think we should do that, and that's what we do back to Cabinet and of course, Kynan and Geoff are on the call, so they will do that, but also let's do it formally unless anyone has any objection from committee members. No? Okay. Helen, did you get all that?
Yes.
Okay, brilliant, thanks. Okay, thank you, Dwayne, thank you, Ross. Right, on to item six, and we're going to go on to Colin for the Children and Families Change Programme updates. Come.
Thank you, Chair. I'll very briefly go through this, this starts, I think, at page 67 in your pack. So members will recall that four councils agreed in early February this year, an investment plan for children and family services. In total, with the DFE money that we were successful in obtaining as part of a change programme, we will basically be investing £12 million in children and family services over the next three years, it's a 24-month programme of work. There's a lot of detail in here, but I'll very briefly, I guess, draw into your attention really that this is a large programme, it links with the DFE Strengthening Families, Protecting Children's Programme, which is essentially that Warwickshire will be one of the local authorities that have been chosen to implement the Leeds Family Values Model. So this change programme, we've been putting together with Leeds, with the DFE, and there are external evaluation and monitoring of the programme from the DFE and from the What Works Centre. A transformation board has been established that Nigel Minns chairs, he co-chairs it with Steve Walker, who is the Director of the Strengthening Families Programme for the DFE and the previous Director of Children's Services in Leeds. Overall, the programme, we're calling it the Child Friendly Warwickshire Programme, and essentially, it's got over 29 elements to it, so, and you'll see in the appendices, there is one page that details the, all of the different elements of the programme, and then it goes into detail in here about each of the different work streams, what they are planning to complete, what they're going to do, and what success looks like, what outcomes we're going to measure, this investment upon. So I think it's just worth saying that because of Covid, that the programme has been delayed by about three or four months. The DFE did already provide us with the funding for this financial year and last financial year, and so they're in agreement with our plan to proceed as far as possible. And it was actually during Covid, about halfway through April, that we agreed that we would start to stand up this project again. So things are delayed, but only slightly, and we are working hard to get this back on track now so that we can get the changes that are required. I don't think there's elements in here, quite a lot of detail about the money, which I think is self-explanatory, and effectively, as Council agreed, that there will be savings attached to this, but the majority of those savings aren't until 2023 to 2025. There is a typo on 4.11, there's an extra digit there, but the savings plan for this is £3.425 million, but that's between now and 2025. I'm not going to say anything else unless anyone's got any questions, really, I could talk about this quite a lot and I'm conscious of time, but happy to take any questions and or pick up any issues afterwards.
Thank you. Geoff, did you want to come in?
Thank you, so hello, everyone. I have been here all time. I just wanted to say very, very briefly that this is a great example of hopefully invest to save. I venture to guess that there are very few local authorities who've been able to actually make investment, put additional funding into this area, and I'm very proud of what Warwickshire has been able to do, I'm very proud of the work of officers. So I just wanted to frame this before we start the discussion. Very interesting meeting, by the way, enjoying it tremendously.
Thanks, Geoff. Right, the floor is open for members, so please indicate. Margaret?
Thank you. Sorry, I'm just trying to get myself organised here. On page 72 of the report, there were a list of programmes that would be supported or even reduced. I can't remember the name of it, but there was a programme that I had a briefing on once, which was about if a woman has had a child that's been given up for care, a programme to try and stop a complete, repeat occurrences of this. Sorry, I've forgotten what the programme's called, but I just wanted to know where that is in this because it seemed to me to be very effective, even though it was only, for a few women, it was really effective. So I'd just really like to know where that programme is, and I've got one other thing which I can't find now, so I'll then, I'll come back later if I find it. Okay, thank you.
Geoff, might want to come back in on that? We can give it a chance.
Yeah, it's, I can, it's called Different Futures, the programme that you're thinking of, and you're absolutely right, it's really positive, it really helps, not women and dads, a few dads, not as many dads, but definitely a number of women have had multiple children removed from their care to make life changes. It has been really successful. So part of the investment plan is to expand that service, and so one of the investments is to increase the amount of workers in that team and also for a £100,000 counselling fund for those parents because we find that a lot of those women have reoccurring substantial trauma and really need quite a lot of in-depth support. And often they really struggle to get counselling support from the NHS or others, so there is quite a sizable investment in relation to that. In terms of the table that is being shown there, this is taken directly from the Council Papers from February and is the savings, indicative savings plan. This will be refreshed every year as part of the Council's plan, but this is basically reflecting on the savings that we're hoping to achieve through this investment.
Right, thank you, but it's great news, thank you, it's great news about that programme, Best Futures. My other question, which I think was answered a lot earlier in the meeting, was about children in foster placements and whether we're able to keep them in there longer, so that they have a few changes, is what I'm trying to say. So that they, they have a few changes is what I'm trying to say to their foster placements. I think we had a little bit of that earlier.
Yeah, so if Helen is able to just go back down to the chart for anywhere, it's one page, there is an element of the, one of the change programmes, projects is children in care and care leavers. And that is all about trying to keep children in place for longer. So we want, whether that, that might be special guardians, so we've got a special guardianship support team now. And part, one of the projects is about developing the offer, so children are able to stay in their extended family members, keeping them in those families for longer through special guardians, the time that they need more training, they want advice, they want a telephone line, they don't want to be reassessed every time, they want a direct support. So this project is about providing that type of support. And the recruitment and retention of foster carers is a key element, as has already been mentioned really, but we should, I'll mention it further now, is that we've been, during Covid, we've had a really increase in foster carers, foster care applications, there are twenty-eight people being assessed to be foster carers at the moment. Last year, we only assessed twenty-one for the whole of the year, for twenty nineteen, twenty. So so far this year to have twenty-eight is fantastic. And that's really what will enable us to, if we get more foster carers and keep children with foster carers, will always be, be positive. And elements like life story work, children need a lot of in-depth support to understand why they're in care and to help with the trauma that, that they've experienced and understand why things have happened as they have done for them. So one of the elements is actually to get a, we're having a five full-time life story workers to support foster care and support children, so that they can understand why they're in care, what's happening in their childhood. And that's evidence as really helping children's, children's mental health, but also helping their placement stability and actually being able to connect and have positive relationships with their carers.
Thank you, brilliant.
Thank you, John. Dan.
Yeah, thank you. We've just, a quick question really. These programmes that are actually on the screen now, is there, are they all accessible at the minute? We've got details we could look at, John, just to find out more about them really, what they include and what the offer will be. That'd be really good. And then the hundred K we've put aside for counselling in, obviously it's not always available on NHS for certain parents, which is brilliant, it's good to see. But I would just like to know, just out of interest really, the counselling, would that be provided by our, our staff or will we be outsourcing that to a local company? Or will it just be, you know, find someone, we'll fund it? Just out of pure interest, will it be stayed in Warwickshire really?
John, did you want to come back in?
Sorry, I forgot I was on you. Yeah, a lot of these programmes are, are live and are happening, a lot, most of them are about extending services, so that exist already for different futures. We do commission specific specialist services, so a parent might have been through, had a psychological assessment, and they might need quite significant counselling support. And we will go and source that from a provider, and that might be the NHS, or it might be a private counselling support. But we will always try to provide support to parents ourselves. So a lot of the, one of, in the Community and Early Health Partnership on the left-hand side there, there's a programme about parent training programme. So we've got a parent, a parenting programme, resource toolkit that we are putting together, which is effectively a number of different evidence-based programmes for parents to support them. And we will have five parent trainers who will be based around the county, so each district will have their own parent trainer, and they will run one-to-one support, group training, online training, and be trained, be supported, doing that directly with parents, but also supporting schools and other, others to be, become facilitators of those training programme, those parent courses as well, parent programmes as well. So it is, it is a mixed, a mixed economy really of us doing as much as we can ourselves, but also commissioning some services.
Dan, did you want to come back?
No. No, no, that's perfect, thank you. Thank you, John.
Pam.
Oh yes, thank you. I think this change programme is excellent. I think it's actually making a difference already, particularly with the special guardianship offer. I think that has already come through on foster panel as making a big change to the attitude of social workers and the confidence they now have with talking to grandparents and connected parents about SGOs rather than looking at the care option, you know, having children looked after. So that's already making a difference. I really want to ask about the life story work, is that going to be done with the children's social worker, or are we going to have that in a different way?
So it will be, it depends, depends on the needs for that child. So the idea is that we have these five full-time, we've learned, life story workers, and they will be able to complete direct work with children. But we know that a number of, it depends on the relationship the child's got with their social worker. For some it will be better so that the social worker or the foster carer or completes that work. And so we would be identifying the best person for the child, supporting them to complete that work. Or it might be that the life story worker does the work directly themselves. We've got a, this is a real area of development really, because we, we have a life story work approach, which just seem, we've been engaged with the What Works Centre around different programmes, we're using the latest of the research for our approach. But we do have a large number of children in care who still leave, not really understanding why they were in care, what's happened to them. We're working, part of this work as well includes some work with care leavers. We're doing some work with the Rees Foundation to make sure that young people can access their records, that they can, if they want to do that when they're an adult, and have that type of, what for adoption would be called birth parent type counselling, birth counselling, where you go through your records and really understand what's happened in your past. So, you know, it, I think success in that area looks like that actually care leavers do want leave care understanding what's happened to them. We get less requests for our access to records because they're not sure what's happened. And ultimately, actually, mental health and emotional wellbeing for our children in care is improved because they have a solid grounding to understand their position, why their parents can't care for them as they, you know, most often desire them to.
Yeah. Have we, but we did some life story work at one of the children in care councils last year, and lots of issues came up for some of the young people there, particularly the ones who haven't had any life story work. And I just wondered if we, if something perhaps we need to go over again, because there were lots of points that they raised at the children in care council about the way that they want the life story work to be done. And a lot of them, I think, wanted it to be done by somebody else rather than their social worker. So I don't know whether you can take that into account, John?
Yeah, definitely. And what I would say about the whole of the change programme is that it is, it is informed by young people and parents. So we have taken this programme to the children in care council, the care leaver forum, the youth parliament, and the online parents group to get their views about different elements. And you're, Pam's absolutely right, that life story work is one of the key areas. And that's really why, that's what influenced it being in this change programme, that young people repeat, I've been telling Nigel and myself, I've repeatedly in the children in care council, that this is an area we need to improve upon. So we're engaging with young people, making sure that they're fully engaged in the programme, what that looks like. And actually, with that, one of our younger apprentices, who's a care, in care experience, I don't think we might be just sharing that she's actually successfully got a job in, as a life story worker ourselves. So actually, we've got a young person in the life story work team influencing and doing that work with our young people, which is really positive, so.
Fantastic. The other thing I'd just like to see is this special guardianship offer that we're doing at the moment, I'd like to see what difference that has made in terms of keeping children out of the system. So if we can have a look at figures for that, because I think that, I feel that that's changed, but I haven't, there isn't any hard evidence for it at the moment, so perhaps we could do that.
Yeah, that's right. I'll, I'll come back to you about that, that's not a problem, look at that.
Thanks very much, thank you. Thanks, Chair.
Thank you. Corin, you had your hand up, but it's down. Did you want to come in?
No, I'm fine.
Okay. In the absence of any further questions, I'll just say thank you to John, and obviously you'll keep us as a committee continually updated. Brilliant, thank you very much.
Thank you.
On to item seven, which is the work programme. Some members, please do say, we've had Nigel refer to the autism strategy, so we can, we can certainly put that in. John Holland's request to have a look at Roundo School. Perhaps we can tell the chair and spokes and work out the most appropriate way to, to cover that for John. I know it's a broader issue than just the schools in question.
Chair, I wasn't, I don't know whether John meant it to be looking just at Roundo, because John's still there.
Absolutely, yeah. Absolutely, it's a broader issue.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So if any, if anyone's got any other suggestions, yeah. Please just say now, or we can take it to Chair. Margaret.
Yes, thank you, Chair. I would like to look into the way school placements have happened this year. There's been, I've had a lot of complaints, and I think a number of other people have. I just need to understand what's changed and why this is so difficult at the moment, and why people are so unhappy with it. So it may, we may find that it drifts also into school transport, but it's actually about school placements, but we will probably need to look at school transport at the same time.
Perhaps officers could provide us in the first instance with a paper with some statistics on school placements, complaints, appeals.
Appeals, yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
And, and the percentage of appeals that are successful would be helpful. Thank you.
I'm sure that's being noted. Jonathan. Jonathan.
Sorry, I didn't turn my mute off. The same report we just looked at said there was another report coming back to us in the autumn, but it's not yet listed, I don't think on there, so maybe the spokes would just need to sort of talk about what shape we want that report to take.
Yeah, absolutely. Helen will have noticed that. Okay. The agenda item, the agenda doesn't list AOB as an item, but let's slot in an AOB just in case there is anything that somebody wants to raise. I think Corin perhaps has something.
Yes, I do. I've recently been concerned about the amount of, I don't know if all the people have noticed this, but the little nitrous oxide canisters that I've seen during my lockdown walks. And it seems to be a real growing issue. You may know more about this, I don't know an awful lot about it, but that it's laughing gas, that it comes in tiny little silver canisters, and it's usually used in things like soda strings and stuff like that. There is legislation about where and how this can be sold, because it's laughing gas, and young people use it to inhale it. If they use it through the canister, it can be incredibly dangerous. But they put it generally into balloons and inhale somehow that way. Equally, it's directly into their lungs and it can have a detonating effect. And despite the fact that there is legislation in place, it, it's very easy to buy on Amazon. If you have a look on Amazon, you can purchase it very, very easily. And it just seems to be, I mean, I've certainly noticed it in, you know, I've got a couple of dogs, take them for a walk, and pretty much every area that I go to now, I'll see these canisters and the remths of balloons. And I just wondered whether it would be something that this committee could at least write to, you know, the government minister and make them aware the fact that, you know, something needs to be addressed sooner rather than later.
Okay. Geoff, did you want to come in on that?
Yeah, thanks. I'm, I'm with you a hundred percent on that, Corin. I've, I've noticed it around the area where I live. And I drew the attention of my cabinet colleagues to this just a few days back, suggesting that at least we should get a comms, a campaign running on this, you know, with some graphics and memes, so social media on the platforms, sort of things that we did for social distancing that seemed to be quite, quite effective. So I shall carry on wishing that. Corin makes a good point about, you know, either contacting ministers or maybe we could do it through our local MPs, but I'll leave that to the committee. But I just wanted to say that I'm, I'm with you a hundred percent, it's extremely dangerous. And it seems to be becoming more and more prevalent at the moment.
Yeah. Well, well, let's write to the minister and copy the MPs in. And I don't see any harm in that unless, unless Cabinet or the leader has already taken similar action, we'll double check. But otherwise, yeah, happy to do that unless anyone has any objections. Okay? Well, well, let's do that. Pete Gilbert.
Thanks, Chair. Yeah, Corin raised a very good point, and obviously Geoff supported it. And this goes also throughout the good practice. These are legal, they are able to be purchased, whether you're using them for the right reasons is another thing, but it also needs councils and authorities to ensure that those places that are selling them are worn and restricted. And this is coming back to licensing issues in the past that I've had. You know, you can be a tattooed drug dealer to get a pub now, to actually do it honorably is a very rare thing. But the other point about these canisters is, thank God, there are no drugs that are legal to be purchased in this way. Because it just proves that if it is legal, people will do it in public ever more so. And I think that it just shows that proper restrictions on the sale of narcotics and so on need to stay in place. So I certainly support Corin's issues on this. I think you can go into bakeries and buy them, because you can make out you're using them for baking processes. So you buy a Victoria sponge and seventeen ounces of these canisters or whatever they come in. It's just a ridiculous situation to be in. And they are very dangerous the way they're being taken. And apparently the hit is so short-term, they're risking so much for so little.
Yeah, I mean, the, the legislation, I think, was twenty sixteen, there are quite severe punishments that are available, I think it's five years of imprisonment, and it can be the case that you have to ensure if you are setting them, they've been, it's not been solved in appropriate reason, so.
Yeah, but mid-chairman man, it needs to be enforced. If I run a pub, if I had a fete in my garden that hadn't been informed of the licensing offer, because I'm a county councillor, I've come down and been like a tonne of bricks. We've ran this place for thirty years without needing the police here once. We've done the job for sixty years, it's part of our love, it's our, you know, vocation. And that's the problem with these industries and trades now, they're not. They're done by people, they want to get a fast buck. So these rules aren't implemented, the restrictions aren't enforced, and therefore, there's nothing to deter those people from sending them to others for the wrong reasons. I've been in shops and seen them being, heard them being purchased and sold. But the people who are there, you know, they're buying them, aren't going to go home and make some cakes, they're obviously using them for other reasons. So yes, the legislation's there, but it needs to be enforced.
Sure. Okay. Well, well, let's write, and I'm sure Helen will make a note of that.
There's nothing more scary than the pen, yeah.
Well, we can also perhaps get some statistics, is there any data that's available perhaps to us in Warwickshire in terms of traders who have been prosecuted perhaps? Nigel.
Chair, I'll ask for information, because I think it's multifaceted, I think it's from trade standards, but it's also around our drug and alcohol support services. So we'll try and bring two things together and see what information we can provide to committee.
Okay, brilliant, thank you. Okey-dokey, unless there's anything else at all, then the date of the next meeting is the, is the fourteenth of July, ten AM, it's a virtual meeting again. And thank you all for attending.
Thanks very much, Chair.
Thanks, Chair, thank you.
Thank you, Chair.
Most enjoyed.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Eusef, well done for sharing that, it's very good.
Yeah.
All right, finally.
Yes, very good, Eusef. Although you are in my conference room, I feel, aren't you?
I am.
You owe me rent. Hi, Eusef. Bye, Eusef.
Bye.
Bye. Thanks, Helen, for putting the slides up.
He looks a little thinner on camera, doesn't he, Eusef? Goodbye, all.
Thanks, John.
Bye, Dan.
Bye.